Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 1st, 2016, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. I'm gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice at heart.
As you can see, Chairman Richard Foster isn't with us this evening, but we will move on as best we can in his absence. I'm gonna start the evening with any citizens, any residents' comments? No residents' comments, thank you. I have one announcement that the Long Meadow Select Board is accepting nominations for its annual Citizen of the Year Award. The recipient will be announced at the annual town meeting on May 10th, 2016. Letters of nomination should be mailed to the Select Board's office at 20 Williams Street or emailed to Debbie House, DHouse@longmeadow.org by Friday, April 8th. We do this annually, and we certainly appreciate any nominations. Are there any other comments from Select Board members?
I just wanted to say we all attended the MMA meetings that were really great, and some of the ideas that I know we got, all got from the booths. There are two things I was hoping that we could talk about in future agendas, and you might want to just look up. One is called age-friendly, call it Long Meadow or the town, and it's really a World Health Organization program that's tied in with AARP. There's grants involved that if during our planning, we consider the senior citizens and their needs in the community, it, as I said, we designate ourselves as age-friendly, then grants start to open, and then we can see as our planning goes along. They said very succincticistic, as of December 31st of this year, the age groups in Massachusetts over 60 will be larger than the age group under 20. So I think it's something worth thinking about. And the other thing I was hoping we'd consider is petitioning the state auditor's office in regards to some of the municipal mandates. That's something that Select Boards can do. And I was gonna bring up a few lists of things, and anyone else who thinks of some unfounded mandates that we might be able to get funding on. And that was it, but it was a great meeting, and it was nice to be able to all work together at some of those conferences.
Great, thanks, Marie. Tom, anything?
No.
No? Okay, Alex?
Yes, I have an announcement. I will not be running for reelection this year. I'm saying this now in case anybody else's decision on whether to run is influenced by my decision. This way, there will be plenty of time for people to take out papers and get the necessary signatures. It remains to be seen who will be running, but I hope there will be a contested election because I do believe that campaigns and meaningful elections are essential to our town democracy. It has been an honor to represent the residents of Long Meadow on the Select Board. It has also been my pleasure to serve on this board for the last three years. If I did not have so many other things going on in my life, I probably would run for reelection. Among the many things I have learned on the Select Board is how much talent there is in Long Meadow, so I have no doubt that whoever replaces me will do the job at least as well and probably better. Another thing I've learned is that there are many ways to give valuable service to the town besides being on the Select Board. I am reminded of this every time we make appointments to our boards and committees. And I have agreed to serve as the volunteer coordinator of the town's spring, track, and field program, and I am excited about working with the kids and promoting running sports in Long Meadow. I intend to remain part of the debates about the important issues that are facing Long Meadow and the greater community, such as the casino, gun control, the opioid crisis, universal full-day kindergarten, the DPW facility, and all of the other capital projects that are coming up. I'm looking forward to serving out the rest of my term and to returning to my prior status as writer and engaged citizen. That's my announcement.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
I have only one brief announcement. There was a special Select Board meeting held last Tuesday. It wasn't televised, and although it was reported in some of the media, I just wanted to make sure that the people at home who are avid watchers or viewers just had a chance. The minutes, I believe, will be posted tomorrow, Debbie, if they're approved tonight, so the people who want to take a look at it can approve the minutes. The major issues or items that were covered at that meeting, the town manager's contract, there was a motion, I'm gonna just read from the minutes, that there was a motion to renew the town manager's contract with the intent to negotiate. At the beginning of June, that motion passed, and so that happened at the last meeting. There were also interviews for the DPW task force and just a review of the public forum by our general experience. It was a relatively short meeting, only lasting a couple of hours, but I did want to let people know that there was a Select Board meeting that wasn't televised. There is no video at the YouTube channel, but the minutes are online. With that, I'd like to just quickly go into our agenda, our agenda tonight. We do have one interview for a board for the Historic District Commission, Kathy Keitzman. If you would step forward, please, Kathy, we can move forward on this.
Listen, listen.
So Kathy, while you're getting set, I'll just tell you, the process is generally fairly simple. Just introduce yourself, who you are, where you live, and just a little bit about yourself and why you're looking for appointment or reappointment to the Historic District Commission.
Okay. My name is Kathy Keitzman. I live at 891 Long Meadow Street. I've been in town, well, my husband and I and family, we've been in town for 21 years. In the last 12 or so, we have been in the Historic District. And I saw that there was, you know, some spots open, and now I have the time, and thought it was something that, you know, could bring the experience of actually living in the district, having done a lot of work on our house, you know, the combination of, you know, the historical preservation as well as, you know, the reality of living in the, you know, the 21st century.
Great. Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Keitzman? Alex?
So, would you advise somebody to move into the Historic District Commission? I mean, I kinda asked the question that way because I think some people are deterred by the requirements. And, I mean, living there, do you feel them sort of onerous, or do they seem appropriate to you?
They've always seemed appropriate to us. I mean, I can speak, and only from my own experience. We've never had any issues with the Historic District as far as work that we've looked to have done. That's not to say that everything has been automatically approved, but, you know, there's always been healthy discussion. And meetings that I've been to, it seems to be that that's the case, you know, with other applicants, you know, where we've seen, you know, the process as well for them.
Okay, thank you.
I guess the only concern I had with Historic District is when I realized that Johnny Appleseed's house isn't really protected because it's not really in the proper Historical District. And so I don't know if you guys will be able to figure out any solution to something like that, but...
Yeah, I don't know, you know, as far as that goes, but I do know that in the last 15 years, the Historic District has expanded, even from when we first moved in, you know, that they have gone beyond just, you know, the Long Meadow Street homes. As far as that particular house, I can't say.
And do you have some experiences on boards or planning groups?
No.
Okay. So this'll be all new for you?
This'll be all new for me.
Okay.
Marie?
Thank you for volunteering, especially this being your first time. I think it's really interesting that the Historic District includes the green and all of the, I'm hoping that the Historic District will consider maybe the gardens and how we can sort of bring that historically back to the way it used to be. Because right now, I know they concentrate on the homes and renovations on the homes, but the Historic District does include this green, which is really a treasure here in town. So thank you for volunteering.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I'd ask is if you have given any thought, would you share it with us? And if not, maybe over the next months, you will have a chance to give some thought to the expansion of the Historic District. That's always been a two-edged discussion of whether or not it's good for the community or how it works with the towns. We've actually had, if you are aware of it, what I would call spot expansion by house by house instead of really take neighborhoods. And so I was wondering if you'd given any thought to that or at this point yet.
Not really, no. I mean, and from what I see, I mean, I think of it as being what really is the day-to-day that people drive down, which is Route 5, which is obviously the busiest part of, you know, what is the Historic District and the largest, as far as, you know, growing beyond that. I don't even know really specifically the exact houses that are in it, so as far as other ones. And, you know, at what point is a house historic and when isn't it? I don't know. You know, at what age do you, are you no longer historic?
Good questions, all. Kathy, thanks, thank you for your application. The process here is, by charter, we have to wait at least seven days to rule on this. Our next meeting's actually in two weeks, and so it'll probably be the 15th of February's meeting in which we will take, I anticipate, will take a vote for appointments, so stay...
Should we nail down, because there's different terms, which ones should...
No, she automatically gets the longest term.
Well, that was kind of where I was going with it, but I wanted to make sure.
She just applied.
So there's one three-year sort of full membership term that's expiring this June, and then there's one that's expiring next year, so it'd be 2017. And then there's some alternate positions. So do you have a thought about what you would prefer?
Don't ask that stuff.
Well, I mean, I prefer not to be an alternate.
Okay, well, that's good.
As, you know, and I would say to go through 2017.
Okay.
Because quite frankly, what would expire this year after four or five months?
Right, right.
Do you really have a feel for what you're doing?
Sure, okay. Well, I just, I mean, that's what I was hoping for. I just want to make sure you're okay with it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming.
Great, thanks.
Our next item on our agenda is Town Manager Report, and Stephen will turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mr. Interim Chair. I think the big news, we kinda talked about before the meeting got started, the school department has announced their budget today. So we've received that document. We'll talk a little bit more about that with the Finance Director in terms of what we see in the numbers and where things kinda stand in our budget update later on. We've met, this is the third consecutive week, so I don't have much new information. We did have some good sessions at the MMA. Interestingly, one of the Community Compact best practices that we signed up for information about was specifically focused on mobility for seniors, especially vehicular mobility. Our network of public transportation through the town is not all that diverse a network, so seniors really do rely on being able to get around in their cars. So that's something that we are, we certainly should be able to create some linkages there. And I think that's just about it for now. I'm probably out, and I'm not gonna be here for the next meeting.
Alex?
On the topic of MMA, one of the things that Tom and I attended was zoning law and municipal law update. Is that the name? I think it's, yeah. So one of the things they clarified was that almost everybody's political sign ordinances, or sign ordinances in general, are unconstitutional. And that's a result of a case that was decided by the Supreme Court last year that invalidated a sign ordinance that had different rules based on the category of signs. And that's exactly what we have here. So I think we have a kind of an imminent problem in that we have elections coming up. Normally, we would be enforcing it, we should not be forcing it. And then second of all, we should be looking to repeal the ordinance that we have in place now because we are subject to suit either way. Just the fact that it's out there, somebody can rightfully claim that their free speech rights are being chilled simply by the threat being out there. So I would suggest to the town manager to just kinda come back to us with sort of a position on enforcement. Like I said, to me, you know, the answer's pretty simple, that we should not be enforcing it, and we should make it clear that we're not trying to enforce it. And, but I think we ought to probably have that for more complete discussion at a later Select Board meeting.
Well, it's timely, Alex, because later in this meeting, we have a request to review and revise our sign ordinance bylaw, so why don't we go through that discussion?
Okay, that's fine.
See what takes us, that may be the impetus for us to take a look with our town council and whoever.
Yeah, the answer would be for this, because I saw the article in the paper. I mean, it's, you have the opportunity, Alex, perhaps as a swan song, apparently now, to put an article in the warrant for town meeting to get the bylaw changed to the way it should be. So I mean, I would encourage you to take a look at that. We certainly can have town council view, or if you want, propose a draft that they think would be more compliant with the law, but that's essentially what we'd be doing.
Right.
I mean, the one thing I want to clarify for people though is, in terms of the First Amendment considerations you raise, I think the point is well made, but I think the thing, the biggest problem I have with signs is not what they say, but where they're put. And people still continue to put signs in the tree belts or in the right-of-way, and that's our biggest issue. That's our means of enforcement. So the Supreme Court decision you're referencing has absolutely no bearing on that. That rule about no signs in tree belts applies.
Right.
For folks watching home, you still can't put them in a tree belt. You have to keep them back off where, and if you don't have a sidewalk, you'll have to do some guessing as to where the right-of-way line is.
It's six to eight feet kind of.
Yeah, it's probably from the edge of the roadway. So you can't have, even if you don't have a sidewalk, you can't have it right through the road. So we'll certainly look at that with town council.
Okay, good. Thanks. Anybody have any other questions for the town manager? I have a couple, if nobody else.
No, I did, actually, because they, there was also a session, they talked about the opioid abuse problem. We had, both of our senators were there and the governor, and they mentioned Senator Mark, he talked about the 45,000 people died in the country last year, and that 50,000, or the year before, and 50,000 died last year. And, you know, he's comparing to like the numbers of Vietnam, which is a little over 50,000. And so they had a 10-point plan that we had a task, MMA had a task force. And one of the questions they had about it is, they suggested every town have a point person. And do we have a point person in place to, you know, for people to, if someone had a questions about our, how to get help with opioid abuse, do you know that?
I think it depends on, like, if you have someone who has a student in the schools, School Resource Officer Pam Chaplin does a lot of outreach, Detective Carl Mazefaro just did a presentation in the schools. I mean, ideally, the police chief from a, I say, law enforcement intervention side, but the police chief, John Stankowitz would be a good place to start, in terms of questions about our ability to manage it. Either he or Fire Chief John Dearborn can answer questions. They both presented here the information. Or if you're not sure, you're welcome to contact me. People can contact me, and I can refer them in the right direction.
Yeah. They talked about the police chief in Gloucester who basically opened his door and said, "Anyone who has a problem with opioid abuse or heroin, you know, you can talk to me. There wouldn't be any charges." And so, you know, that was a good model. The other thing is that for parents who are reaching out, the task force really kinda missed that. I know that we have one group that meets on Thursday nights at Holyoke at Providence Hospital for parents to go in, they can just drop in and help them cope with the struggle of having any children who are addicted or a family member. But, you know, if we had a need arise here, you know, that's something I'd like to have us look at.
And I guess, I think I missed answering the question, Tom. I think what I would suggest is, I mean, anyone in the town departments, law enforcement or police or, you know, fire, I think we don't have a point person, but any one of them, if a citizen has a concern, you could talk to anybody in the departments, and I'm sure they, they're all very knowledgeable, and they can all point you in the right direction for help. But I guess if we're looking for one name to start with, it would be Chief Stankowitz.
Okay, thanks.
Tom, Debbie just gave, sent out a document that was distributed by the Mass Municipal Association to all elected officials throughout the community, and it is, does talk about the opioid problem and places and help that people can get.
One of the things, and I shared that with the chief, and one of the things that I, because we talk about it internally, about our approach and issues we're finding and things like that, at least weekly. But one of the things that was a good reminder from that mailer was the Good Samaritan Law, where if you report somebody who's overdosing, but you have a small amount of drugs on you, you can be excused from the charge by making the call. And the point of the Good Samaritan Law is to prevent people from not calling to report an overdose in progress for fear of prosecution for whatever drugs they may have on them. So I do wanna, you know, remind folks that that's out there. And the other thing that, another area of focus that we've talked about here, and I know the, our public safety personnel are promoting as well, is, you know, people can go get Narcan at, you know, a pharmacy on their own, and there are, I mean, there's tons of flyers and kind of one-pagers and things from the Mass Department of Public Health or from the District Attorney's Office, where you can get information on how to get help, maybe a little bit more privately. And so I want, you know, people who are out there to know that there are lots of resources. We have a lot of resources in the town government, but there are also a lot of resources out there besides that that people can go get on their own.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Tom. Stephen, I have a couple of questions on a couple of other topics. One is just a statement that you talked about senior mobility. Pursuant to that, there was a discussion at the most recent PVTA trustees meeting. I sit on that as a representative from here, and I'm gonna make some more comments about that at my comments at the end of the meeting. I, you know, it may be worth people, it's kind of a teaser to stick around, but so...
Now, that's quite a draw.
Stick around what they're doing to dial, right. But just a couple of questions, Stephen. We had talked somewhere, it wasn't in your minutes, but we talked about the Select Board meeting support items on our website that we were having trouble getting them on. Have we had, been able to make any progress with the IT group and getting those back up?
I think we should be fully caught up on them. I haven't heard anything in a long time.
Okay, I haven't either. I just had it on a bring-up list.
At least, we should be up to at least three years on most of the, most if not all the minutes, yeah.
But, and the support, but the support documents that go out with it?
There's a documents, actually, we just made this change. There's a documents page that's always been available that has, I think, hundreds of documents. But you had to go through the little wheel, the settings, to get to it, and I just put in IT. I think it's now, when you click on the Government tab of our main page, and it drops down and it populates with all the boards, commissions, and then agencies. There's also a thing that says calendar, I believe. I guess I, I don't have to, I can actually narrate it in real time here. So we did add the documents link.
Okay.
So people can go see, yeah. If you go and you hover over the Government tab, you'll see that there's a documents page, and if you go to that, I mean, there's, it's, they're in separate folders, but there's many, many documents. Similarly, we're gonna add a component to our main, our webpage. It's in, under construction right now, but a document repository specifically for the DPW project, because I know we get a lot of questions about reports, studies, presentations. So we're in the process of constructing that and populating that with information.
Okay, thank you. Another, just a follow-up was the MGM mitigation local community, you know, local community task force. Are we still okay with, are they meeting without us, or... task force, are we still okay with, are they meeting without us or are they, you know?
I don't know that they've had a recent meeting. We did let them know that we are in the process of recruiting and appointing a representative from the community.
And is that posted or something?
It is.
I saw something in the paper.
Yeah, I think the deadline is, was last Friday?
Is that the one?
The LCMAC one.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've received a few applications so far. And I did communicate with, what I communicated to the gaming commission was if there was going to be a meeting, I would attend on behalf of the town in the interim, because we can demonstrate that we're going through our good faith efforts to find a permanent replacement.
So that means that our next meeting, we might be able to try to schedule some interviews with these folks? Great. Move forward on that. Right. Any other items for, questions for the town manager? Next item of business is a review for the folks at home of our Long Meadow School building project. So we have with us the co-chairs of the Long Meadow School Building Committee, Bobby Barquette and Peter Greenberg. And we also have our owner's project manager representative, Tom Murphy. And I invite them up, they, I think we have a presentation.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to move out of the way.
I can let them the lights as well.
Do you need any introduction, as they say?
I don't know. It's been a while.
Let me just say, the purpose of them coming up here, coming before the select board tonight is really to speak to the people of the residents of Long Meadow who committed the good part of $44 million. In fact, I think the entire part of $44 million to construct the new school and reconstruct this. And as you will hear, that the project is well wrapping up and it's a good time for them to give that report. So I'm going to turn over to Mr. Barquette, Mr. Greenberg, and Mr. Murphy.
Thank you very much. We appreciate being here this evening. What I'd like to do is kind of break right into our first slide so we can go through the timeline for the folks at home. It's not easy to read, but I'm sure the folks at home could probably read it. Absent from that right at the beginning is the submission of the statement of interest for the high school project, which was done in 2007. And in 2009, we selected our owner's project manager, which is Jocelyn Lesser Associates. Then moving forward, we had to select a, an architect so that we could prepare for a feasibility study. And the office of Michael Rosenfeld, now known as OMR Architects, they were selected to execute the feasibility, which we did, and then, which drew up our project scope of the entire high school, which included the renovation portion of the high school which we're sitting in presently. After that portion, we selected a construction manager, that's the CM at risk right there, and that was Gilbane. And then in April of '11, we put together the bid packages and received them. Moving on into '11, we executed the GMP. And not long following that, we had our groundbreaking in 2012. From that point forward, we started phase one. And substantial completion came in February of '13, of which we moved all our students from the existing Long Meadow High School into the present new building. Then we moved on to phase two, which included demolition, which everybody saw at great length. And then we finally completed the site work in November of '13. And we can fast forward a bit to our final completion with the GC, which was just last year, March. Our mass chips, which is the energy portion of the certification, was completed and certified in September, which is all of what, five months ago now. And finally, the MSBA completed their audit in December. And on January 27th, they executed their final vote of our project. And we're happy to say that they'll be releasing some dollars through the pro pay system within the next few weeks. Mr. Pasterzak, I'm sure will be very happy to see those numbers light up in his system. So that was last week, MSBA vote. And this week, we're in front of you fine people this evening. And on February 4th, which is Thursday evening, we'll have our last meeting of the Long Meadow High School School Building Committee, of which we'll have two votes to accept the minutes of our last meeting and to dissolve the committee, finally. And by town bylaw, school building committees only act for one project. So that will have completed the work of our little band of merry people. So that's our timeline. I'm going to hand over the rest to Tom and talk about some of the finances here.
Thanks, Bobby. So as Bobby had mentioned, we occupied the building actually three years ago. The students moved in and we're here in front of you tonight because of the process with getting our final funding from the MSBA, which was just approved. So what we have here on the budget slide is the far left column, which was our original budget back in, when we, during schematic phase back in 2010. Then the middle column is at the time of bids, when we received hard bids, we issue, the MSBA issues a project funding amendment where once we have hard bids, they calculate again what their percentage is and what the town share is, and then we move forward from there. And the right column, I think, is the most critical one that shows where the project ended up. Now, if you go all the way to the bottom on the, in that white box on the bottom, you can see the split between the state share and the town share. And we had originally bonded on the far left, the 44 million, four forty-eight, which was our target for the town share. And we came in just a little bit above that and the delta there was 278 at the bottom. So we had been tracking this all along and we thought that that was a very favorable number that came in from the MSBA. The process that we have gone through throughout the project with the building committee was, we review every expenditure with them. We have contingency accounts that is, if we could use the term discretionary spending, sometimes in projects, spending isn't discretionary, but we have various contingencies to use to deal with changes and things that come up. And in each case, we didn't spend the entire contingency amount. So this is a little chart that shows what contingencies were used out of all those contingency funds. So the construction contingency was about 30% of what we spent. The GMP contingency, which was a fund that is within the contractors, the CM at risk contractors, he has to get approval from the building committee for spending it, but it's in his budget. And then we had the funding change 17,000, or 17% from the MSBA. Owner's contingency was 6.5% and that left us with about 25% of that contingency monies remaining. So where the money was spent was, we spent about half the owner's contingency and the owner's contingency is used for soft costs. Architects fees that are extended, other things like that, non-construction related. The construction contingency was 1.5 million, 1.5, 1.577 to be exact, out of the little over $3 million in that contingency. And then this is the contractor's GMP contingency, in which case we spent about $1 million out of the 1.2 million. So in each case, we spent a little less than what the contingency we had in the budget for. And that was a goal when we started out the project, not to spend any more than we had, but also to deal with the change in funding that came about at the time of the PFA amendment. So this is, gives us a little snapshot of where the project ended up relative to other projects in the state, adrenal projects. So if you go from left to right, you can see the total number of change orders. The state average is about 4%. We came in at 2.5%, which I think was good. Eligible change orders, the state average is about 1.77% and we were at about a half a percent. And the main reason for that is because most of our change orders, and we'll get to the details about these a little bit later, most of our change orders dealt with unforeseen conditions. If you recall or if you weren't aware, the state reimbursed us for the new building of the school building, but the state would not reimburse for this portion of the construction. So the renovation work of the district offices and a few of the alternate gym spaces were not reimbursable. So the town took those on as part of the project, but they refunded themselves. Since this was a renovation portion, we had a lot of unforeseen conditions in this area and all of those were not reimbursable by the state. So a lot of our change orders came in this area because of unforeseen conditions and the reimbursement wasn't there from the state. So that's why the delta there for this project is a little greater, a little less than what we usually see. So the reimbursement of change orders was at, again, about a half a percent. The next categories is design related. We have, we often break change orders into one of four categories. You see, there's something that's missing in the design documents. And that is pretty typical in construction projects. Design documents aren't perfect. We expect there's a certain amount of things that won't be caught. And then there's differing conditions, which is what I mentioned, is unforeseen conditions. There's owner discretionary, owner-directed changes, and then there's third-party changes. So in the first category, you see design-related changes. Again, the state average is about 1.5%, 1.4%. We came in at 3/4%. So I think our design team and the, did a good job in getting documents together. Differing conditions, again, this is where we're a little bit higher than the state average. 1.4 is the state average and we came in at about 1.65. And then the next two categories are owner-directed change orders, which is a change order that the owner, in this case, the building committee would decide to, sometimes building committees decide to add scope or to do a little extra work if they know funds are available. But as you can see, the state average is about a little less than 1%, 0.86%, and we came in at 0.06%. So we were well, well below what the state average is there. And as well as third party. Third party is building inspector, fire department, that kind of thing, adding scope to the project as we go through it. And again, we were very much below the state average there at 0.02% as opposed to 0.17%. So all in all, I think, I know the project was very well managed and the building committee throughout the process was very involved in every aspect of it. Forecasting changes that were coming up, looking at alternatives, if a change order came up, looking at alternatives of ways of doing things. And in the total, 1.5 million in change orders, about $1 million of it was unforeseen conditions. And I know, just a brief breakdown of those unforeseen conditions, we had, we have about $200,000 with the transite piping on the site that was, was not known that it existed there and we had to remediate that. There was about $300,000 in, $350,000 actually, in additional ACM materials in this area. There were, once we tore apart the walls, there was some mastake that had, that had to be abated in sills and a number of things. So I know that was one situation where we looked at three or four different options of the most economical way to get rid of that and to make sure the building was safe, but to do it in economic fashion. The nautatorium was also part of the scope of work. And that building had a number, that section of the building had a number of construction issues to deal with. We, we had some ductwork that had to be replaced, we had some underground piping that had to be replaced, and there were a number of things in there that were unforeseen conditions. And then we had some unforeseen conditions at the upper field work, what we call the back area there by the, between here and the football field. So all totaled, all those unforeseen conditions in this area of the construction were about $1 million. So again, I think our charge when we started out this project was, was to try to get to a point where we could go with the original funding of the project, the original town share, and try to manage the project to meet that town share. And as you saw from the graphic, the first graphic, which I can probably go back to, I think we did a very good job getting there. We were $278,000 greater than that. We were always looking at, tracking change orders. We had a number that was a little bit greater than that, but I think the audit from the MSBA came back in very, what I thought was a very favorable audit number, so. So that's kind of the overview. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have. Again, we're here in front of you, three years, three years after we occupied the building because the state funding is just approved, so.
Mark's motioning over to us saying, is that it?
No, no. But do you have any more of a presentation, a formal presentation?
Well, the formal presentation is simply a recap of just the overall big picture. You know, folks have been following this thing ad nauseam for quite a while. I mean, looking back historically, Tom McGary was the superintendent at the time that they commissioned Castle Booze Architects in 2003. And they got them on board in 2004, starting to work. I was elected to the school committee in 2004 and then became co-chair of the Facility Improvement Committee at the time, which then worked with Castle Booze to come up with a facility study. It was all of $50,000 at the time. If we recall, our feasibility study was $750,000. So from about 2004 through the Castle Booze study, which the information collected from that facility study then provided enough information for the statement of interest. And those statement of interest, along with two for the middle schools, were submitted to the state. State went into moratorium. When they came out of moratorium, any community that had submitted multiple SOIs, statement of interest, were asked to just select one. We clearly selected the high school because we were on warning status for accreditation. And then we moved forward from there and were selected to get to feasibility and so on. And so here we are today. So it's quite a process. And Mark, as you know, you've been part of that committee.
And I'm going to give everybody a chance to ask questions, but I just want to make a statement to Bobby and Peter, on behalf of the town, to thank you folks as volunteers for what you did. People need to understand that for a good part of two and a half years, I think, you know, they were up to here in the school building project. And during construction, I know, I would say one of the two of you, if not both of you, was here just about every day, stopping in the construction trailer and talking to the folks at OMR or Gilbane and literally looking out for the best interests of the people of Long Meadow. And I know that you folks helped form, the two of you helped form some and make some tough decisions that could have easily gone another way in terms of finances for the town. And I very much appreciate that. I also want people to know that the color of the bathrooms is Bobby Barquette's selection because otherwise they would have been a different shade than they are now in tile.
So many discussions.
Anyway, but I really think that the, you know, people, and I, when I originally asked for you folks to come forward and I talked to Richard Foster about it, I kind of saw it as a victory lap and I think it really ought to be that. So on behalf of the town, I want to thank the two of you and thank the other members of the school building committee who worked very, very hard to make this building what it is. And clearly the professionals we hired, Tom, and some of the folks at Gilbane and our architectural firm, you know, also worked pretty hard and consistently on the project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over and see if anybody else has any questions.
Well, I just, I just had two children who both got to enjoy going to high school here. One's is currently a senior. And when I think back of, my son's on the wrestling team and I think of the cage area that they used to work out in, and had this big fence there with paper over, you know, blue nylon paper, I was thinking. And now they have this beautiful wrestling room and, you know, the auditorium. I mean, it's just, it's really, it's a great, you know, it's great that things worked out and the swimming pool, you know. Every now and then I'll talk to folks from other towns who don't have a swimming pool in their high school. And, you know, it's really a benefit and it's great the way you, you know, the committee worked to keep that in the plan and redo that. It would have been nice if it was a little faster pool, but, you know, that probably would have cost quite a bit more.
Right, yeah. There's quite a story behind the pool. The pool, the state won't fund new pools for public education. They just don't. So the town spoke very loudly during forums. A lot of folks came forward as advocates for the pool and the swimming program, park and rec, and of course, our athletic program here at the high school, to preserve the nautatorium in any way, shape, or form. So we made a commitment to do so. And if you know the geography, a little bit of that space over there, we flipped the men's room with the ladies' room and we really gutted that thing right down to dirt at the time. I mean, I recall going there as, you know, park or rec when I was a kid here in Long Meadow, and it didn't look any different from when the time we destroyed it. But there were a lot of unforeseen conditions in there and Mark was privy to a lot of those conversations where we were literally crawling into spaces we didn't know existed in that nautatorium area. But the commitment was there to try to get it, to get it done. And I think the finished product is certainly from the locker rooms and showcase space when you're hosting different teams for meets and such, it's a very nice space. But the town, I think, appreciates the fact that we went through that. The nautatorium itself, unforeseen conditions, is about $200,000. itself, unforeseen conditions, is about $200,000.
Yeah. Well, we have two of the top swim teams in the valley, and we have, one of our women swimmers, swimmers, you know, probably win about five state titles in a couple of weeks. So, thank you.
Alex, you had some?
I, I just want to make sure I understand where that, you referred to a $278,000 delta. And I tried to do the math, and I'm not sure which two numbers you're subtracting.
Basically, it's not an exact math, because it's the, the, the number on the left, the very bottom, that left the original project budget.
Forty-four.
Forty-four, 480, 448.
Yep.
That was the original split before bids between state share and town share. Then when we actually got bids in, that changed to, to 45 million, became the town share. The MSBA excludes certain, certain amounts of work, as I mentioned. The naterium, everything on this side was, was not reimbursable. So when that came, that number came in, the bids came in, that number went down on the state share and up on the town share. And part of that also was because one of the things that we wanted to do, as Bobby mentioned, is the naterium. We had about $900,000 with the alternates that were bid as elective scopes of work when we put the bid documents out. And the bids for the base scope came in under what we expected for, for bids. And we were able to fold those num, those costs into the project and still maintain our original budget for the, for the construction. It was the naterium work, which, again, in, in talking to everybody in the town, they felt it was very important. We, we did tile work in there, and we did some renovation work in there. It was the stage. The, the, the music people had always told us that they really wanted a, a stage thrust, which would allow the, that the lower portion to go down to an orchestra pit or an up for a stage. So there was some alternates that, that the building committee and the community felt were really necessary if we could afford them, and it turns out we could. So things like that is what shifted some of the delta from state share to town share. At the time, though, as I mentioned, we still had about four or five million dollars worth of contingency that was not yet allocated for anything. So rather than go out for any additional bonding, at the time, we decided, well, we, we can just manage the project. We can manage to that, to those numbers, not spend some of that contingency and try to, try to manage that original bond amount of 44, 44 and change. What we ended up with was 44,738,000. And that's, that's the delta between the two. And as I said, the-
That's, so, so you get to 278 by subtracting 44,448,000 from 44,738,000?
Yeah, but as I said, it's not exact because these-
Yeah, I know. It wasn't quite right.
Yeah, the numbers, the numbers for the bond are, are a little bit different. And the PFA amendment, I think, the numbers for the bond, the 278 are, are based on, on the bond numbers that we had. And I, I think that there was a little bit of a delta between the, between the, the town share at the time of the project budget and what the, the bond actually was, so.
But what you're really saying about the 278 is what, we're having to pay extra from what we anticipated?
Originally, but again, not after bids. You're paying actually less than what we, what we knew at the point of, of when bids came in. And that's when, what we, what, what we call the GMP, where we understand what the cost of the project is from the contractor state. Then the MSBA issues what they call the Project Funding Amendment, and it kind of readjusts those numbers based on, as I said, the alternates that they are no longer participating in, and some site caps and other exclusions. So at the time of the PFA amendment, which was in November of 11, the, we knew that the shift, there had been a shift in, in state share to town share, but we decided at that point that we could probably still manage the project and, and not spend that, that additional funds.
Alex, if I could, just to give you the same answer, I think, in a, in a different way, that, that from my perspective, sitting on the, on the school building committee, there were several points in time, particularly, and they keep talking about the pool area and the naterium, where I know the discussion was, we've got this thing apart, we found additional work, we found things to do. And, you know, there were a couple of leaks, there were a couple of, you know, tile work, that kind of stuff. And the, the decision was, do we do this as part of the project? Do we not do it until the town, we found this, come back later and spend more money, probably even be more expensive doing it the second time? Or do we do it and go, try to go out and find money, and additional money now to do? And the decision was made, you know, we've got the place apart, we've got contractors on site, we're doing it as part of the, of the project. And I think it was, you know, it, it was a tough decision to make when, at the finances at the time. And, and again, that, that was about 200 of this, you know, money that ended up being the 278,000 that cost us more than we expected. But my, my sense, sitting through it, we were living through it with, with the committee, was that if we had not done it then, we wouldn't need to do it. And there's no doubt it would have been more money later. And, and you weren't, I mean, one of the things was, there was a leak found. Nobody knows how long the leak had been there, but there was a leak found, and there was a surge tank discussion and things that people in town don't really need to know about the details. But if they want to, they'll find them on the minutes of the school building committee. The only thing, I would ask, Tom, if you, can you take this presentation, because it was tough a little bit to see for people, maybe email it to us, and we can put it on the, on the town website. That'd be great.
But just as, as another note, the $278,000 is over what was bonded by the town. The, the town actually approved at town meeting almost-
Seventy-eight million, seventy-seven million.
Seventy-seven point five million.
As if the state would contribute nothing.
Correct.
That's correct. And the way it's worded specifically at town meeting is, is if the state had to bail out that day, you're on the hook for the full 77.5. We ended up spending 75.8. So we, we were almost a million and a half, a little more than a million and a half, under what the town approved.
Over the tot, of the total?
Of the total project price. Right. So we thought we'd be spending 77.5. We ended up only spending 75.8. The $278,000 is over what we bonded, what we originally bonded.
You were, I think you were still on the select board at the time when we went through the bonding. And at the time, the thought process was, we're in historic, historically low interest rates. Little did we know that they were going to stay lower, get even lower. But, and so we actually went through and bonded that $44 million in two different bonding issuances. And we did it well in advance of the expenditure of that money. We got that money well in the front of the project. And in fact, during the project, there was actually some interest income because we had borrowed so much money, we had that cash on hand. That interest income came to the town, not to the project. Correct, Paul? So, you know, not that it makes a whole lot of difference, but there was some, some interest that came to, to, to the town. There was also some, I'm going to call them rebates. Tom, you may know.
Utility rebates.
Are they rebate? There, there are things that we purchased that manufacturers give rebates for and, and other financial considerations. And those financial considerations and rebates also came to the general government side and didn't get credited against, at least many of them get, did not get credited against the project. And so if you look at a project entirety cash flow, and I haven't done it, I don't know if anybody has, but, but the excess is far less than $278,000.
I think, I think that the utility rebates, I think, totaled nearly $135,000, of which the MSBA took their share. And it's included in that 278. So really, the net effect, or net additional dollars, is really less than $150,000.
Okay. And I think it's, it's worth people seeing that out of, out of our expenditure, $44 million, I mean, $158,000 is, is decimal place almost. But anyway, does anybody else have, Alex?
So, I mean, can you talk about some of the trade-offs you had to go through? I mean, you're facing unforeseen costs. You're trying to manage the project to keep the town share at about what people anticipated at the beginning. So what were the trade-offs to, to get to that point?
I, I think mostly just we were very efficient, because as I mentioned, we knew a lot of the change orders were due to unforeseen conditions in this area of the building, and they wouldn't be reimbursed. Every, every time there was a potential change order, we, we would say whether it was reimbursable or not, or whether, whether we thought it was reimbursable from the state or not. If it was reimbursable for the state, it kind of gave us an impetus to maybe we want to go ahead and do this work. If it wasn't reimbursable with the state, we, we thought long and hard about whether we wanted to do it. And also, was this the most economical way of doing it? So as I mentioned, on the, the naterium work and on the, the ACM materials in this building, we looked at things a number of ways at the, at the request of the building committee of making sure that it was the most economical way of, of doing, doing that scope of work.
ACM is the bestest mitigation.
Right.
So, I mean, was it, was there anything that, that you had planned to do that we ended up not doing?
Not really. Again, what, we mainly dealt with, with changes with that. Once, once we have bid documents, the scope of work is determined. It's unforeseen conditions are adding scope of work that-
Because you were talking about the alternate.
The alternates were included at the beginning. So that we knew what the alternates were at the time of the PFA, that second column.
Right.
We knew that we wanted to do those alternates, and we could fit them in within the budget. And that's, again, where some of the delta came from. But I can't think of anything that we ever really decided not to do because we didn't feel that there was, there was money there. I think that it was mostly the change orders that we really took a hard look at, whether we did them or not. But I don't, we didn't take any scope out of the project to, to compensate for anything.
Bobby, before you answer, Stephen, can you add to this answer that you're about to give, any discussion about value engineering that was done throughout the project?
Well, we did a lot of, well, yeah, let me speak to that first, and then I'll come back to Alex's question there for a second. The value engineering happens early, very early in the process, before we went out to bid. And there were a lot of difficult discussions that were had during the value engineering stage. I remember, for example, what type of roofing should you have, and the various costs associated with that, what type of flooring, and trying to marry the floors together from hallway to classroom to minimize the maintenance plan later on, and different types of products that may have to be used to be cleaning. So we were trying to look very far in advance to see what it was going to take to actually maintain the building. So that was, that was part of the value engineering there. I think to Tom's point and to the question, Alex, that you had, there was not a lot of cutting out of stuff that we, that we had. There was, there was a lot of forethought put into the design of the project, and we had a very inclusive process from the get-go with, with the work we did with Frank Locker and, and all the work with Jan Hart and that group that, that came through. What type of building do you really want to have? What's valuable to your town? We absorbed the costs for LCTV, the, the general construction of LCTV. Of course, they fund themselves from, from the inside. And I understand, Dave, I know you're listening right now, is that you're very happy with your space, so I thought I'd share that. So that was a commitment from the town, from the, from the project. Of course, it was in the old footprint there, LCTV, and it's a very valuable jewel to the town, is, is the work that the people at LCTV. I can't, I can't say enough about them, but not to displace them. They're here. All the fibers come in here. All the communications are here. So that was just one of those things that we said, we've got to absolutely do. I think from the standpoint of, of maintaining costs, the school building committee took, and I, and I can't say this without any more gravity, strong, hard look at how the project was being run. And from that standpoint, maintained, tried to reduce the amount of overtime that was put into the project. Gilbane had a very accelerated timeline to get us in, because we had a phased project, a very unique project here. We didn't have a whole property to, to put the, the high school out. At least we, that's what we chose, to keep it here on the footprint and to utilize the space that we have here for the superintendent's office and for people services, LCTV and the, and the business center, and some of the auxiliary athletic space. So we really took a hard line on that, where they had to report to us on a weekly basis if they wanted to do weekend work above and beyond. So that went on through all of Phase One.
All of Phase One.
All of Phase One, we, we held a very tight rein. And, and sometimes those meetings were very colorful. And they were pushing back pretty hard on that. But we said, no, we've got to maintain our costs. We started the project with this idea that the PFA amendment was not going to come back at 900,000. We thought it would, it would adjust. But three months into the project, we felt as though we were a million dollars in the hole. And I remember the discussion at the time, should we go back to the town and maybe try to bond another million dollars? We said, no, let's try to live within our means. And then at the tail end of the project, if we had to, we'd deal with it. And so here we are at the tail end of the project, and the net, net, net effect is that over the bond, we're about $150,000. Though we're down, I don't know if that, I don't know what's going to hit the soundbite for the reminder is going to be that, you know, we went over bond 150,000, or, or that the entire budget, and we came in under about over $1.5 million, which is very rare. Okay? So a lot of it was the control of the project, but we had outstanding professionals. Our project management team, I can't say enough about Tom Murphy and his team with Jeffrey Luxembourg and Stu Lesser from, from Johnson Lesser. Gilbane is an outstanding construction management company to work with. Omar Architects, phenomenal. I mean, you can see in the numbers alone how the quality of their, of their documents and their specs, that we didn't have to go for change orders just to correct things. And there's, you know, it's not a perfect world. There were corrections that had to be made, but certainly well under the averages across the board.
We had nice weather, too, that building.
We were very lucky.
You know, if we had winter like last winter, we would have been miserable.
Totally different. You're absolutely correct. Totally different.
Marie?
I think the narrative you just gave us was key. And that was in the beginning of the project with the asbestos issues and the traverse pipes, whatever they're called. You were, you were a million plus behind. And instead of just giving up, you decided to fight for every dollar for the town of Long Meadow. So even though everyone says this is a really expensive building, I attended a few of those meetings as an interim, and you were fighting for every dollar from the very beginning, and you didn't give up. The town really appreciates that, because this could have just exploded. You could have said, oh, well, what can we do? This is what's going to happen. There's going to be change orders. But you protected every single one of those contingency funds. As we can see, everyone came really close to being substantially below the state average. And so it was the work done by the school building committee, which makes me think, you know, we could have an all-town building committee, have you guys stay on for the next few projects, because you have so much experience. And that's what's key.
Don't push forward.
I guess I would like to throw my own bouquet as well. I obviously, you know, students occupied the building in August of 2013. I don't, I started in April of 2013. So the bulk of the hard work on a project had already been done before I got here. Nevertheless, I still got to give a speech at the grand opening, and my name's on the plaque. So, you know, yay me. I decide a lot of stuff. But I think, even from the first meeting, I think the thing I'd like to say is, is first of all, commend the, the work of Peter and Bobby particularly, but also Tom, his team at JLA, and Gilbane and Omar as well. There were times that it did get a little bumpy at the end, and there was some issues with subcontractors. And every, every project, especially a project of this size, goes through that at, usually at the end. The end is like kind of the death rattle of the project. But all of the disagreements were handled rationally and professionally. And I think we've talked about, you know, Bobby has referenced, you know, meetings. I think the thing that impressed me most about this project in, in what gets you from over a million dollars over to less than $150,000 on a, what was a 78 million, but then became a 76 million dollar project, is, is the amount of time that they spent doing emails back and forth and coming to the school and having conference calls and, and separate meetings. And I think all of that effort and the focus, really, and the attention to detail and the, the comprehensive knowledge of the project, stem to stern, is impressive on its own. But I think what makes it most impressive is that it was done by, completed by two people who are volunteers, who also run businesses and have families. And, you know, the amount of time that they dedicated since even my brief stay is really amazing. And so the, over, over the term, course of getting the project funded and approved by town meeting and now getting to completion, I mean, it's a, as, as far as I'm concerned, I think the, the community owes the two co-chairs certainly, but the school building committee generally, a debt of gratitude.
We could give the wrong applause.
We could give the wrong applause. We're about to complete the, the largest public works project in the history of the town of Long Meadow. So I'm going to leave the last word to you folks. Anything last you want to say?
Well, we just thank everybody for their support. Yes, you know, I really want to thank the town. And one more note, I, I'll give you one more note. One of the caveats to approving a town project like this was the commitment to maintenance. Absolutely the commitment to maintenance. So moving forward, you know, I know that between the DPW and the facility director and, and the school itself, we have outstanding individuals under the employ of the town of Long Meadow. And, you know, there's, there's one piece that's, that's not in here. And Paul, I'm sure Paul has, Paul Pasturcik has a, a good idea of this. Our maintenance team and our DPW team stepped in a bunch of times, a bunch of times, to fill in some gaps that were done there. And, and, you know, those guys are just outstanding. They're absolutely outstanding. They're the unsung heroes in the town. You know, they're the guys who get things done. You never see it. You never see it. You know, it's, it's quick to complain, but- it's, it's quick to complain, but never to, to pat them on the back. And they did an outstanding job. And one more point to the townwide building committee. I definitely would recommend at least a working group townwide, working with the schools. They, they have the largest square footage. And you guys have the responsibility to oversee all that. And clearly, that's the, one of the biggest chunks of the budget, or could be. And with the largest project. Now that you say it like that, Mark, now I'm intimidated. Maybe I'll go backwards here. But I, we appreciate the kudos. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, folks, again. Thanks.
All right.
Thanks.
So we're going to move on to our agenda. The, the issue of the additional cost over the financed amount will come up in a little bit in this meeting that the select board will, will start, will address. But right now, what I'd like to do is, is just entertain some motions to approve prior minutes. Yeah, the January 19th minutes. Is there a motion to approve the January 19th minutes?
Motion to approve January 19th regular meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I have just one comment in the first paragraph that, a note that Homes in Long Meadow ranked 90th out of 351st cities and towns. I'd like to add, for taxes as a percentage of property values, which understood that ranking. And I've given that correction to Debbie, or addition to Debbie. Any other corrections or additions? All those in favor of approving the 19th minutes? Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the minutes of January 26.
Do you have any changes? Okay. Move to accept January 26 special meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
No, seconded it.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of January 26, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. The pen has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Our next item of business is our quarterly investment report. We're going to call up Paul Pastersek, who's our town CFO, to discuss a quarterly business report. And from there, we're going to morph right into Long Meadow High School bonding for, or financing of the additional $278,000 we just spoke about. So Paul, the.
The quarterly investment report, quite honestly. It's fairly plain vanilla this time around. All our investments, as per the policy, again, are meeting the guidelines. And some of those include that no individual bank will hold more than $5 million at any one time. All banks are of a green rating by the Vera Bank Rating Group that we use. All accounts that we have are also fully insured or collateralized. Those are very big, important things that we always try to find and maintain. There is one exception that has been itemized and talked about over the last couple of these reports. And that had dealt with the transition of Hammond Bank with the Berkshire Bank. We currently have a CD that is heard at, held at Berkshire Bank. That is also due very shortly. And that, that little criteria will be taken care of. And we'll be able to, once again, at one point, once again, in very near future, make the statement that all our accounts are fully insured and secured. But again, we are confident Berkshire Bank is green rated. We're confident that they're not going anywhere in the very near future. And that our funds are safe. Again, there's, there's some transactions that were itemized by the treasure, treasure collector. A CD held at Berkshire Bank was closed in 2000, in January of 2016. And the funds were reinvested for one year in a bank that had full FDIC, DIF insurance at a rate of 1.25%. And another CD was opened at Century Bank at a rate of 1%, 1.5 million dollars, with that money being collateralized. Also, in January, we had moves of money, $200,000 that we had in the money market account at Century Bank. Or we moved it from Century Bank to Belmont Bank, only to gain a higher interest rate at that point in time. A simple movement of money, just watching the, the rates that are at hand. The last matter that I really just want to bring to your attention at this point in time is, again, we have the matter of a July 1, 2005 state law that took effect, where trust fund money had to be invested in banks that had a, had their home office and/or, had their home office and a branch located in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We do have four investments totaling some $890,000 that do not meet that criteria. All of those investments, I will say at this point in time, are less than a year old. And one easy way that we can fix this is, is quite honestly, just by reclassifying them as, as general fund investments. The, again, the state law changed and specifically mentioned trust funds. These were invested as trust funds. The, our, our general fund investments cannot be longer than a year. All of these four that are listed on the back page, all of these four investments that would not meet the criteria of having a, a home office or a, the home office in Massachusetts are, are all due within a year. So again, the general fund would be able to, I believe, hold those legally in the general fund as opposed to holding them in the trust fund. The other thing I will say is that we also tried to, I did follow up with Bartholomew just before this, this was written to see if they had any, any, Bartholomew is our, our investment firm, to see if they had made any headway into getting this rectified at the, at the legislative level. They have been in contact with the Department of Revenue and the Commissioner of Banks. For some reason, they can't seem to get a definite, some certain definitions that would clarify this. Having getting no answer from Bartholomew, I called our new auditor. We have a new auditor that started FY15. He's aware of the new law. He's aware of our investments. And basically, his position was, let's not, let's not do anything irrational. Let's, you know, keep it as is. Let's see if something moves. You don't have a lot of money. They're all due within, within a year. So his advice was, you know, you hold strong. Do not make any moves. So unless the select board advised me either to, I can reclassify them as, as general fund revenues, which would be, which would be legal because they're currently classified as trust fund investments. Or I can just leave them as status quo. You know, unless I hear otherwise, I would just leave them as status quo.
Paul, do I want to ask you which, which ones they are?
They're on the very last page of, of the spreadsheets, Mark.
The one that says Bartholomew.
Bartholomew CD holdings.
Okay, thank you.
There's $890,000. And as you can see, they are all due within one year from now. And again, because they are due from one year from now, the general fund, the operating accounts can't hold CDs, but only up to a year. That is why prior to this, we could not have had those in the general fund because we held them now for three and four years. And some of them even the full five-year terms that they were originally bought at.
Now, what, the way I'm understanding your two alternatives would be, one would be to reclassify, and the other would just to be kind of ignore.
Yes.
Okay. The, now, when I think of trust fund, I, I think of it as, and maybe we're using different, or, or at least I'm thinking of a term differently than you are, as, as something that's dedicated for a specific purpose. So, so, so could you elaborate on sort of how, how we could do that? Because general fund would be for any purpose. Am I under, are we talking the same language? Or?
For, for the most part. That if, again, if you open that up and you go to the first page.
Yep.
Of the, of the spreadsheets, you will see you have a town of Long Meadow depository and investment accounts.
Okay. So wait a minute. Is this is under Bartholomew?
This would be the first page on the, on the Excel spreadsheet.
Okay. And I'm sorry.
It says, the tab at the bottom, Paul. Now, it says deposit and investment accounts.
Yeah, I've got that. And where are you on the page?
No, that's the one. No. Yeah, that's the right one.
That's the right one. Okay.
So like, where it says Bartholomew stabilization CPA general.
Right. Those, those would truly be considered the trust funds that we have in place.
Right.
But you notice above, further up, we have many operating accounts. As an example, the Country Savings Bank account. That is a CD that's due on 5/12/2016. Or again, any one of those, any other one of those lines that are up above where it says the CD maturity dates, those are all general fund operating investments.
Okay.
So they, they total well over the $890,000. There's probably a little bit more because of accrued interest. You know, I mean, they total well, well over what we have invested from those other banks that we, that we're considering in question. The ones that are on the last page under Bartholomew, the $890,000 worth of principal.
Okay. So, okay. So when I hear you say that, it makes, the way I'm understanding is that you're telling me how you could do it mathematically.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, how, how can we take money that's for a specific purpose and put it in with money that's general purpose?
I think he's saying, Paul, are you saying swap the, the purpose of the funds?
I'm just saying, it's just to reclassify them. I mean, that, that's a simple accounting.
You reclassify those as general purpose and reclassify these as.
As trust funds.
As trust funds. So the trust funds are now in Massachusetts banks and the other ones aren't. So he's going to just.
Oh, I see.
It's a simple reclassification of accounting.
So in other words, these, I'm going to put this in quotation, questionable banks, you know, it's okay to have general funds in the questionable banks, but not trust funds.
Because the law specifically said that trust funds had to have that caveat of the.
So if we've got $10 here, Paul.
Right, right.
Now, it's $10 here. It's $10. You're just going to say, okay, this is now the trust fund money. And this is the general money instead of the other way around.
Right, right.
And, and it's your view that these questionable banks really aren't questionable, you know, in a real sense?
Right. They're not in danger. Three out of the four have FDIC insurance.
Right.
We are under the threshold of the $250,000 limit with, with FDIC insurance. Actually, all four of them have FDIC insurance.
Okay.
So we're, we're, we're secure in that regard.
Right, right. Okay.
And they pay a higher interest rate.
They pay a higher interest rate. Again, I believe all of them were, when they were purchased, they were four, actually, they were five years CDs that we had purchased originally. So given the longer term, as you, I think the rates are on here, you know, they're all 1.83%.
1.83%.
Again, because of the longer term purchase five years ago.
And then when they're, when they're up, when they reach the term, could we rego, could we reconnect with the same, put another, we couldn't do, we could only do one year at a time then, if we were to do something with that same company?
When, when these become due.
Yeah.
And if, let's, I'll, I'll give you an example. If we left them as trust funds, when they became due, we would invest in a Massachusetts bank.
Right.
For technically up to five years. And we would be all set.
Okay.
If they become, and we reclassify them as general fund, we can only buy, we can only have them invested for one year because they're, they're called, noted as operating funds. And the law only allows us to go out to one year on operating or general fund investments. So that would be, depending on where they're classified, those would be the options of what to do when these mature within the next 12 months.
When you look at our budget, the, the better choice would be to have them be in a five-year, a longer term. No, but a higher interest rate.
Yes and no. It all depends on your view of where you think interest rates are going to be in five years. If you think, if you think interest rates are going to go up, up and up for five years, you may only want to do, you know, a two-year.
That's right.
You know, something like that. So you kind of, you make your best guess at that time.
Tom, Marie just had a question. Go ahead, Marie.
Did you say the auditor said just hold tight?
Yes.
Because I know this is because that law passed in July, and we asked if they could give us some grace period before we pulled out because it was going to cost us. And no one responded to us, no matter who you reached out to. So it's, and if your auditor feels just hold tight until it's ready to mature.
Yeah, no, I was a little surprised because, again, Bartholomew said that they were going to call the commissioner on banks. And they never, they never gave us an answer. Because they said the commissioner on banks never gave them an answer. So I was a little suspect because this is their money that they're investing for us. And, you know, they get paid upon this. But our auditor said, they were going to call the commissioner on banks. He's going to get right back to me. Well, guess what? He never has gotten back to me yet. So I don't, I don't think they are getting the answers that they want out of the banking commission. Or I'm not, I insist that they want. They're not getting the answers, period.
They're not.
And a lot of it is dealing with technicalities of definitions and things of that nature. And I think they may look at this and understand the dilemma that they've placed at hand and just say, let's try to fix it some other time.
Yeah, because it's basically an unfanned mandate, which will cost this town, would you say, like $30,000. And no one's looking to do it.
The law should have said any new investments, but it didn't say new investments.
Or it didn't give us a grace period. So I would say, whatever you feel is best, the best way to go. If our auditor gets back to us and says, holding tight's fine, too. But if you feel more comfortable with the switching of the names, I'm open to where you feel you want to go with it.
These things mature in, in August, September of this year, and January of 2017, according to this.
I mean, my intent would be to work with the auditor. Because what I would not want to happen is for us to get written up in, in, in a management letter.
Yeah.
And if he's comfortable with this, and so it doesn't end up in a management letter issue, then that would be fine with me. If it's going to end up in a management, and he feels that, we'll move him right away.
Yeah. And if it costs us, we'll write to the auditor. We'll file a petition asking for reimbursement because it's an unfanned mandate that cost the town. Yeah.
I mean, I guess the, to me, this course of ignoring, I mean, and I understand we tried to get guidance and they haven't given this guidance. And I don't think anybody would accuse us of, of going rogue. But, I mean, it seems like we're aware of this law. We're not in technical compliance with it. And, and, and the explanation I've gotten about the reclassification seems entirely proper. So it seems like that would be the more correct thing to do. So, so I would make a motion to reclassify those funds in the way that Mr. Pastersek outlined for us.
Okay. Thank you. Is there's a motion? Is there a second? Well, I'm going to second the motion because it's, it's a painless thing to do. I'll, I'll second the motion. So we've had some discussion, I guess. And the motion is to reclassify. Does anybody have any other discussion on it?
Yeah, my concern is, you know, we might get slapped with a management letter in the audit.
How could, how could we be criticized for complying with the law?
Because the law did not consider the practicalities on the ground. And reclassification looks, obviously, the auditor's not comfortable with that. Because you're, it was put in as trust funds.
Well, I guess I didn't hear that.
No, the auditor is not comfortable with us liquidating these. There is, there, he said, there's no need for us to liquidate these at this point in time. I think he would be comfortable and would not have a problem if we reclassified them.
Oh, he wouldn't. Oh, I thought you said he didn't recommend it. And you were concerned about a management letter.
What he was saying is remain status quo to keep them as trust funds. And that was kind of his position. But if we were to reclassify them as general fund, I'm sure he would have no qualms with that. You know, what that would do is just, actually, it would give the, the general fund a little extra interest at the higher rate. And the trust funds would just get a little bit lower. It's not going to be a lot of money either way.
And so where was your concern about a management letter?
Before calling him, if we had these on our books, and he would do the audit for FY16. Some of these are going to be on our books, or all of them are going to be on our books on June 30th of 2016, was he, when he does the FY16 audit. At that point in time, they would be fair game. If he was going to take a position that they were out of compliance, that's the time that they would have been fair game for a management letter issue.
Okay.
So instead, it'll show a modification in the direction of compliance.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. We're going to take a call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, which is to reclassify these, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. Sheen and then asleep. Thank you. Paul, what else is on your list?
We have a bond anticipation note that we originally took out last November. You may recall that we took, we had a number of projects going on at the time. And we took out basically two bond anticipation notes. One was specifically for the high school. And we took it out for three months. The others were for other projects. And we took those out for six months. And those six months ones become due on, in May of 2016. But the one that we took out for three months, again, specifically for the high school, $2,256,000 that is due on February 18. As the gentleman before me just alluded to, the MSBA approved their final numbers. We are expecting a $2 million check, our final payment from the MSBA, within the next week or so. This bond anticipation note for 2.256 million dollars is due February 18. We still do have a shortfall in our accounts of $278,000. It is more or less $278,000. It is my recommendation, the, the treasurer went out and sat bids on the $278,000. There were, there were five bids that came to the town. The five bids ranged from anywhere from 0.6 to 0.75 percent. Century Bank was the low bid at 0.6. So, it would be my recommendation that we award the three-month, $278,000 bond anticipation note dated February 18th, 2016 at a rate of 0.60, again, to Century Bank. At that point in time, that, those, that $278,000 would then become due when those other bonds become due. And I imagine we're gonna talk about how we're going to finance that 278, the final financing of that 278 is maybe as soon as this bond anticipation note is approved.
I think you're right, Paul.
Yeah. I mean, I can take it one step further as you'll, you'll see in my note to you folks that, you know, my, my recommendation would be to take $78,000 out at the annual town meeting. That money is basically in free cash resulting from the rebates that we received from both the electric company and the gas company. And then to finance the remaining $200,000, $200,000 over two years, just from some state house notes, amortizing $100,000 in each of FY17 and FY18.
Let's take one at a time, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Let's start with this bond anticipation note. One way or the other, at, one way or the other, on, on February 18th, the town has to come up with $278,000. That's assuming the check from the MSBA gets here, gets deposited and clears all but $278,000 of our obligations for that, that current ban. Is that correct, Paul?
Well, on February 18th, it's 2.2 million dollars that is gonna be due, not 278.
Right, but 2, 2.2 million is due, but we're anticipating a couple of-
We're financing this difference.
Almost $2 million from the state.
Right.
Right, okay. So, so the question is, should we, and I'd like to focus the conversation right now on, should we issue a ban for $278,000 per the recommendation of our CFO that will make up for the difference between the, the ban that's, that is expiring or coming due, excuse me, and, and the payment that we will be getting from the MSBA? Marie?
I move that we accept the ban.
Okay. Well, there's actually some formal language, I think, that we need. Is that correct, Paul?
There is a vote that I put down there. It's, I, I don't think it's absolutely necessary, but since it's there, I would recommend that we take it right off the paper.
Yeah, I think the, the motion is, Marie, here.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
I don't see it on there.
Here.
Okay. I move to award to Century Bank the three-month, $278,000 bond anticipation note dated February 18th, 2016 at the rate of 0.6 percent.
Motion's raised, there's a second.
I'll second it.
Tom seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
So, the way I'm understanding, we have no alternative to this.
We can default, I guess.
Right, right, right.
The answer is correct.
Am I right?
Right.
Yeah, or either we, we find $278,000 stash away.
You write a personal check for it.
There you go, okay.
Right, okay, so, go ahead, Tom.
I just have one question. Now, when bids come in like this, who, who sees them besides you? Do you have a committee that sees them? Does town, share the town manager?
They're actually taken by our financial advisor at his office as the intermediary. He takes them, then he actually forwards them to the treasurer. We, we, we take them, usually there, it's no brainers. We are taking the, the lowest bid on there unless there's something unforeseen.
Yeah.
And sometimes there are ties where we'll take the first bid, but usually, like I said, the low bidder coming in is, is, unless they're, well, we're actually getting their money, so if they're going out of business, we might be in a better position than we started with. But, I mean, they're, they're all good banks.
Okay.
So, it's basically a low bid type of scenario.
Yeah, no, it's just, you know, we talk so much about transparency and, and so at every level, just, it's a, I'm just putting that question out to make sure that they'd all, all go to you and then, you know, make the decision in a vacuum.
Right, no, they, they, again, they, they actually go through our financial advisor, they record them, they send us the bid sheets, per se. They all have to come in. I'm sure that they have the documents, the actual documents that they're bid on. So, we get a summary sheet from the financial advisor with who's bidding and at what rate they're bidding at.
Great, thank you very much, Tom.
Any other questions? Call for, Stephen, I'm sorry.
I just wanna clarify, to Alex's point, you're right, there isn't an alternative at this point, but I don't want that to be conveyed to, that it's kind of like a sneak attack. This is kind of the culmination of something we've been talking about for over a year and I think we had never really, we'd never really specifically identified the approach to funding, the funding mechanism, but only because we didn't know the final number.
But, we haven't done the final funding. What we're doing, Stephen, is, I mean, when we approved this 2-point-something-million ban, we said, hopefully, the MSBA will pay, have paid by then, by the time it's done and we'll know what's going on. But, we always, I always, at least was under the awareness that we were gonna have to do something to roll over some leftover amount. I mean, so I don't think-
Yeah, you said, this is like the cul, we've been talking about this a lot, that's what I'm saying.
Anyway, I'll call for a vote on the, on the motion to approve this bond anticipation note to be issued. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Votes five, four to zero, thank you.
Can I just start to pass it around?
Yep, so we, we need to sign this. Paul's also recommended a, a mechanism for funding when it expires, and it will expire because it's a, it was a three-month borrowing that we just approved, how we eventually pay for this. We do have to pay for the, this $278,000. I just wanna make sure everybody who's watching this and listening is aware that, and Bobby Barquette properly alluded to it when he was earlier, at, at the town vote where we voted to fund this high school, the, the select board, the town government, was authorized to borrow up to $77 million and it was a very specific number, but on the order of $77 million for the, for the building of Long Meadow High School. So, in fact, that the select board has at their discretion the ability to fund this by going out for borrowing without an additional vote from town at, at a referendum-type vote. That's not as a threat, it's not as, it's just so people understand the, the authorization that we have to do what we're going to discuss. And that authorization was given to the select board some four, four years ago, I think, in, in the vote. And the question now comes is, what's the best way to fund an additional $278,000? And Paul Pesterzak has recommended, as our CFO, one way would be to pay part of it, $78,000 out of free cash by a vote at town meeting, which is a transfer of funds, and then, and then pay for the other $200,000 in a short-term borrowing that we would pay off within a couple of years. I know there are probably as many different ways to do this as there may be people recommending other ideas and so the question is, is, does anybody have any other suggestions or considerations? And Alex, you-
So, I mean, we're financing this school over 30 years, right?
The first bond that we took out was- A nearly 30-year bond, yes.
Right. So, why wouldn't, I mean, this is part of the school cost, why wouldn't we just make this part of a 30-year bond?
Short-term notes through the state house are very inexpensive and quick to do. If we wanted to bond $200,000 over 30 years, it would take the involvement of bond council, take the involvement of-
Okay, so transaction costs.
Issuance costs, probably to the tune of $20,000 or more.
All right, so the trans, so I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, and, and it's entirely appropriate to finance something that's gonna last 30 years, to pay for it over 30 years, by, get your point about the transaction costs. What would be the longest period of time that we could finance it where the transaction costs would still be low?
I think it would be five years, but I would have to double-check.
Okay. I mean, I guess that's what I would be in favor of. I mean, because we, as, I think what you guys are gonna get to in a minute, is we're under some immediate pressure, you know, with respect to our budget and it seems like, you know, there's no reason to sort of add to that.
This, this actually will have no bearing on our budget, per se, because this is, the high school vote was a debt exclusion.
Right.
So, whatever we have to pay in principle in any one year, whether it's over two years or five years, will just be added to the tax levy with no bearing.
So, that 200, so if we, we paid $200,000 over two years, that 100,000 is, is sort of indebted exclusion.
Well, we add it to the tax levy and then add it to the expense side. So, it's really, there are no bearing on the operating budget.
Yeah, but with respect to the 78,000, that would have an immediate effect.
Well, it's free cash.
Right.
It's free cash that, that really came in as part of those two rebates, 138,000 total in rebates from the two utility companies. The MSBA did take their portion of it, which would've been almost 50 percent. So, in essence, we benefited, have benefited from that and we still have that in hand and it is part of our free cash at this point in time.
Alex, I'd like to offer the 180 degrees from you, which is, is pay it off all at once and have a vote out of the reserve fund. And I, I say that for two reasons. One is that although it doesn't impact our budget, per se, it does impact tax rates. You know, somebody, somewhere that additional cost gets paid over time and it comes out of income, which is-
Tax revenue.
I, I made a, a statement a few times through the course of funding the high school off and on, that there was a commitment to the residents of Long Meadow that their tax rate would be impacted by a certain dollar amount. It seemed to me it was like a $1.36 or something like that, Paul? $1.35, whatever the number was. I don't really recall it right now. And, and we spent an awful lot of effort when we actually issued these first two bonds and we borrowed the $44 million over two different periods of time. And, and we made them of time lengths to keep it to that, that commitment of a dollar amount on the ta, on the tax rate. And although, you know, everybody says, you know, our, our reserve fund is sacrosanct, I, I liken it to the difference between your checking account and your, and your savings account, where the reserve fund is our savings account. It's a one-time expenditure. Yes, it would take a, a two-thirds vote of the, of town meeting and, but I'm, I'm pretty comfortable of going back and asking that because it is truly a one-time payment that would keep us from having to raise our, our tax rate. And I know it would only be, what, a few cents at most, a couple hundred thousand dollars?
$100,000 plus the interest might be about six cents based on the tax.
Yeah, so, it would, you know, and again, it's not within our two and a half, $25 cap, but it's six cents is six cents. And I don't know if I'm gonna convince anybody, but that would be my take and it's very, I know it's, it's very different from borrowing over a longer period of time. Marie?
I guess my only concern is, Paul, you might be able to answer this. My understanding is when we, they bond, people spoke to us. They were concerned that our funds were not high enough and there was really a point where we could have gone down in the bond rating and we were skating on the edge, which would have increased our borrowing costs. So, by doing that, are we now going to risk our-
I, I was gonna bring up that very point. You brought it up. The, there was, I don't wanna say a negative outlook, but one of the negative things that when we last bonded and knew, that Moody's brought up, that as a double-A2 rated community, we did not have the types of reserves that other double-A2 communities had in their pockets. And that was something that they did bring to our attention. So, it would have that effect on it. The, the other thing that I will mention too is, this board also has a, a general reserve policy. And I forget the exact percentages, whether it's 6 to 8 percent, that you folks want to have in general reserves. We have teetered over the last couple of years of just around that 6 percent in reserves. I don't foresee there being a lot of free cash certified in FY16. I should say FY17, once the FY16 books are closed. So, we, we, again, you could even fall under your own reserve policy, we're very close to that also.
And where did the, where did the Moody's say we should be? We were, our policy is 6 to 8. Do they say we needed to be 10?
I think that they would probably, they would've looked at 8 to 10.
Yeah.
They would've looked at the next step higher.
Which is substantially more.
Um, sure.
How much more?
Well, we're talking about 1 percent is probably, I think it's $600,000.
So, if you're talking-
We're talking about a $60 million budget.
So, you're talking about-
Anywhere from 600 to 1.2 million.
1.2 is where they really wanted us, 1.2 higher.
Right.
Okay, yeah, that's my only concern about going that way.
Okay, well, the good news is we have some time to discuss this. We don't have to make a decision now about how we're gonna go about-
Right.
Paying this off and I think we can take a look. Perhaps, Paul, we do get a better look at as we get further in the year of what our free cash may look at the fall.
Right.
Maybe it is a free cash opportunity, if not all, some of the, that's additional money. But, you know, I, you know, based on what you said, maybe we do look at $75,000 in the spring and see what we do with the balance.
Yeah, I mean, it would be my intent to write a, an annual town meeting warrant article for you folks to decide upon. That'll bring it up back to the table.
Your warrant article would be for 75.
Warrant article would be for 78, actually.
Okay.
Right, but again, it would bring it back to the table for you folks to actually make the, the decision at that point in time.
Anybody have any problem with that, going back? Paul's gonna write a proposal for a warrant to pay two-
So, why wouldn't the 200 be-
Because we don't have it in free cash.
No, no, but you, you wanna finance that.
Right, so, I, I, there's no further authorization needed for any amount to be financed, but I would need an author-
No further authorization from this board or from the town, or?
No further authorization from the town. I, I would still need this board to sign off on it. But, if I put in for 78, it's certainly going to get your minds going and exactly how you wanna do it.
Right.
It would amend whatever I proposed to, to your choice.
Like I said, I mean, you know, my suggestion is not to dip into free cash like that, but, you know, that's, you know, a good point to discuss it.
Yeah, I guess my concern is we're looking further down when we look at the budget update, if that free cash is really gonna be needed later for other aspects of the budget, not for operating.
What, the free cash in the spring?
Yeah.
Well, let's see what he-
Yeah.
Well, they're in the process of going through all that, so we'll, we'll make a recommendation when the time comes.
And these bonds would be paid off and what?
This, this proposal rate, well, depends, which, the bond anticipation note is three month. The other bonds, depending, we could do it, we don't want the five years with state house notes with very little issuance cost. We could go out to 30 years, but you're gonna add a lot of issuance cost if you wanna go out something longer than five years.
Okay, thank you, okay. Thanks, Paul. Do you have anything else to add?
I think there's a couple of other things in between on the agenda and then I'm back for a budget update.
Okay, great. And I think the document's been going around this time. I'd like to call up, we're moving into kind of shifting gears here. There's been a proposal by the Long Meadow Baseball Association for some signed discussion as Catherine Pacella, come on up, why don't you come on up and apologize for the two-and-a-half hour delay here?
What they got was an opportunity to see democracy in action, so.
Instead, I saw my classmate Bobby Barquette for an hour and a half and that's, that's a little tough to take.
I was gonna point out why Bobby and Peter were here. It's interesting, both of them attended Long Meadow High School in, in their day, so.
As did I.
He was our catcher on the baseball team, I might add.
All right, go, go ahead, the floor is yours. Why don't you just introduce yourself to the folks at home and tell us why you're here.
Sure, thank, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Pacella, and with me is Paul Philbin and Michael Delgado. We're all on the board of Long Meadow Baseball Association. It's an organization that's been in the town for at least 40 years, and it's historically been one of the prime sources for our high school baseball team. And while listening to all of the other issues you have to deal with, I realized this is kind of relatively small. For the baseball-playing segment of our town, this is actually really important. And, you know, I heard some comments when Bobby Barquette was talking, and Michelle Akusa, when you were talking about the swim team medals and how it was so important to keep the pool because we wanted to have, you know, a recognized swim team. We want the same thing for baseball. We have children playing ages seven to 19. We play primarily on Turner Field and DePippo Field. Our proposal today would also, however, include Strope Field, which would then also extend into Little League. So it really would cover the entire baseball group. The purpose of our proposal is to enable us to fundraise so that we can help implement and maintain improvements to the field. Our fields are very nice, and our DPW does a very good job. But there are improvements that could be done. Unfortunately, we're in an era now where we're actually competing. Baseball is becoming privatized. Every year, we are losing kids that are going to the Springfield Rifles, or the Van Horn Venom, or some other private group that has, you know, unlimited fundraising opportunities, and they can provide all different kinds of, you know, bells and whistles that we can't. We go to towns and fields in other towns, and end fields in other towns around us. And our towns, in some instances, pale by comparison. You know, I'm a lifelong resident of Long Meadow. I went through Long Meadow High School. I played softball. You know, that's embarrassing. You know, they come over, "You don't have any bleachers?" "No, sorry." You know, "There's nowhere to park," and, you know, "The cars are bottoming out on puddles." And, you know, we're looking for kind of a win-win solution here. We're rule followers. So we read the bylaws. We said, no, one of our biggest abilities to raise money is through advertising signage. And you see it at Fenway. You see it on TV every night with baseball. Town bylaws don't allow it as they're currently written. So we say, okay, let's go in, and let's see if we can propose an amendment to the bylaw that, a narrow amendment, that would allow signage, advertising signage, to be displayed during the baseball season, which is now April to October. We play fall baseball as well, on Strope, DePippo, and Turner, all of which are enclosed fields. And what I mean by enclosed fields is that you can't really see into the fields from the main thoroughfares. You know, when you're driving down Williams, back when I played softball, all those, Arberitee wasn't there. You know, we used to wave to the cars going by. But now, you know, you drive down, and you have that glimpse as you go through the exit and the entrance, but by and large, you know, you're not seeing anything. Strope, if you're on Williams Court, you can kind of peek in into Strope and DePippo. But again, if you're driving down Williams, you're really not seeing into those fields. So we drafted the bylaws. I drafted it. I'm an attorney, as well as a mom and a baseball coach, and lots of other things. The idea in drafting it was to disrupt the existing ordinance, the existing bylaws as little as possible. So we kind of added that separate section, and that was the purpose behind it. We drew it with an idea towards some of the issues that we know are important to the town, and that are important to us as residents of the town and as parents. We didn't want the signs to be seen by a butters, or to be distracting to traffic. We wanted them to be limited in size and number so that it wasn't, you know, kind of turning into this comical circus of, you know, posting and the like. We wanted, we didn't want them to interfere with maintenance of the grass, or with the play of our children. We wanted them to have appropriate content. And we wanted an ability for the organization sponsoring the posting of the signage, soliciting the signage from the advertisers, to be responsible for maintaining them, for putting them up, taking them down if one tears, fixing it. You know, this is also not only a win-win for our organization, but it's also a win-win, I think, for local businesses. And I can tell you, if I was looking for a landscaper, and there was a landscaper that had a sign on Turner Field supporting my son's baseball organization, I'd be more likely to choose that advertiser. And we're primarily focused on local advertisers. You know, a number of members on our board have local businesses. You know, Paul's got a business. I'm a partner at Egan Flanagan &amp; Cohen in downtown Springfield. We're local businesses. You know, we're looking to keep that advertising locally, you know, in that win-win scenario. I'm trying to think if there's any other issues. So basically, what we have before you is the proposed changes. These proposed changes have been before the planning board. We were before them last month.
Select board.
Select, no, we're before the select board now.
That's right.
Screaming all up. We're before the planning board. They requested two modifications, and those two modifications were reflected in green in the version that I emailed. Hopefully, all the colors came through. So you had your existing languages in the black. Our proposed language was in the red. And then the changes that were requested by the planning board were in the green. And they authorized us to let you know that they were wholeheartedly in approval of these changes with their modifications, which we then made before coming to your board.
Okay. A member of the planning board happens to be in the audience, so we'll check with him perhaps later. But thank you. Is there anything else that you wanted to?
Not at this time.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, if I can start out. One, the first one is, are you looking for the select board to adopt these as proposals, town proposals to be before town meeting, recognizing with 10 signatures, you could put these up before town meeting by yourself, right?
Right. We would prefer them to go through the select board with your endorsement.
Okay. So that's the request, is a select board endorsement. That's fine. I guess my second question is, what was I doing from 1988 to 1994, when every spring I dragged with other folks signs out to Strope Field that we put out there? I'll bet you there's still, or remnants of them are still probably in the.
They are still there. There's a sign for the Holyoke Blue Sox.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Which is now the Valley Blue Sox.
And the kids used to say, no, no, that sign goes there because that's where it was last year. And the kids could tell you where the signs went, so they're all lined up because they can remember, oh, I hit it off of the such-and-such a sign. And you can't move the sign so that you can compare year to year which sign they hit it off of.
To be honest, I think.
We were just.
We were allowing noncompliance, which continues today.
I think I would add, though, that the bylaw applies to town-owned, like town public lands. Strope and DePippo is not owned by the town.
Right.
The planning board had a different, that's what I told the planning board, and they were pretty clear to me that it's still town property.
Strope and DePippo Field are not.
They're owned, they're owned by the.
I promise you, library trustees beg to differ on that one.
Okay, that's just what the planning board told, told us.
And I think there's, in fact, I'm meeting with some trustees Thursday to kind of go over a renewal of the lease of the property from the trustees for the purposes, basically, the town has a lease, has had a long-term lease of the land for the purposes of playing the baseball there. I don't know if the signage is covered under, but there's a broader document, though, so it's not, it's not town-owned land. I think that's probably the difference. That's how I always, from our department, that's how I understand the difference.
But I don't understand the bylaw to be limited to town land. I mean, I can't post a sign on my front lawn.
Right. No, it, right, it doesn't. It's, because it, that's, at the very beginning, it says, on any public way or on private property. So.
Within public view from any highway, public park, or, yeah. I think that the catch there is probably, well, as far as Williams Court, maybe considered a public way. Can you see them from Williams Court?
Yeah.
You can.
I mean, it's possible people just put them up. I guess, could I just, because one of the things, I did read the bylaw. I mean, I generally support this. This kind of triggered some more thoughts to me where I truthfully think, notwithstanding the, this is the same section that has the 60-day restrictions on candidate signs. I've also been, we've been talking internally about a potential adopt-an-island program, where you give businesses the chance to have a little sign, a tasteful sign, and they take care of maintenance of the island.
I remember when they were up there 10 years. We've done.
But under our bylaw, they would not be allowed.
They're still up there anyway.
So I think, I guess what I would say is, I appreciate their work in really trying to have the smallest possible footprint to accomplish their goal. I truthfully think there's a, really, a rewrite of the bylaw almost entirely, probably in order. And I don't think it's a heavy lift. I mean, I don't want to make it seem like we're trying to put it off. I mean, I think it's probably, our town council, my count, has seen this. I think, based on our earlier conversation, we're going to go back to them and say, why don't we just look at the thing end to end? It's only a couple of pages. I would recommend that the board, as it considers the warrant for the annual town meeting, look at a more comprehensive rewrite that allows them to do what they want to do. I would, and I, this is probably going to be very popular, but I would recommend looking at that provision about view from the public way, because there's a fence that goes around the track at the high school, and it's already been put on my radar screen that the football boosters are going to want to have a conversation about doing signage down there for their teams. And so, you know, I think, is there a revenue opportunity for the sports clubs that can support town and school programs? And I think there is. So it's really just, do we want to give town meeting the opportunity to analyze the trade-offs of seeing signage versus having this potential funding stream for the programs?
Marie, go ahead, Marie, and then Alex.
Actually, I'm a little worried about stretching it out too much, because you might actually lose a town meeting if you all of a sudden got signs everywhere. And one of the things, I have a couple of questions. Turner, Strope, and I thought you said DePippo, right?
DePippo.
But I didn't see that unless it didn't get printed out, right? So you're talking about?
We didn't actually identify the fields.
Oh, you didn't?
No. What we did is, based on the way we crafted the restrictions, our belief and understanding, and the planning board, I think, was generally in agreement that the only fields that would meet these qualifications.
Okay.
Would be Turner, Strope, and DePippo.
So even though it says, it's just note inside parentheses.
Yeah, one of the questions I had, and DPW has not yet gotten back to me on this. I was referred to them by the town office, that if you're familiar with Turner Field, when you turn in off of Williams, there's like this gravel access road. And the same thing with Strope. When you turn in off of Williams Court, there's like this gravel access road. And I wasn't sure if those were deemed public ways, such that, you know, it would then, we wouldn't, so, and no one seemed to know.
I don't know who, are we just, our town engineer just started today, so they're not right of way.
Okay, okay. So then, then it wouldn't be an issue. So that was the only concern with using that terminology. But our intent was to write it in a way that only those fields would qualify.
I had a couple more.
Go ahead, I'll then follow.
Okay. And you didn't, you do play at Bliss and Greenwood also.
Not Long Meadow Baseball Association.
Oh, Long Meadow Baseball Association does not?
And those fields are also visible.
Right. No, I was just curious, because you hadn't mentioned them, and I, as being fields you played on. So that's what I was curious about. The other question I had was, and then you said this goes towards a fund for field maintenance, and, or is it going to be going towards a fund for the baseball association?
Well, the idea behind the fundraising would be that we would be looking to do some improvements on the field. And we've had some discussions with the appropriate town personnel about, you know, trying to get some of those improvements, and how they're going to be implemented, such as bleachers, a scoreboard, things of that kind. One of the feedback that we've gotten is, okay, but we need to maintain it, similar to what we heard with the high school. So it's great to put it in, but then how do we fund it to maintain it? So part of our fundraising effort would be to try and generate a yearly revenue that we could designate towards maintenance.
Okay.
Obviously, we would also want to raise, I mean, my goal would be to raise as much as possible, do as much as we could for the program. And we do have other fundraisers in place, but the advertising signage, so far, you know, far and away exceeds, you know, the bake sales and selling T-shirts and things like that.
But it wouldn't be for uniforms. You're talking about things to actually improve the places where you play.
Correct. The families that participate, and the, us as an organization, we share the uniform cost, but it's primarily families pay for it each year.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I have no conceptual problem with this. I mean, you know, I have no problem with signs and, and, you know, anything to sort of further the mission of your organization and other similar organizations, I've got no problem with. The problem is that we would be building upon a bylaw that's fundamentally flawed, you know, because what the whole bylaw, and this doesn't, doesn't apply to campaign signs, but it makes all sorts of value judgments based on the category of speech. So, and, so as it's written, as you've proposed it, and again, this is no knock on you, you're just kind of follow the scheme that's already in place, we would have something like advertising signage being placed above political speech, which is exactly opposite of the way the First Amendment is supposed to work. Political speech has the most protection. Commercial speech has less. So, you know, how that all gets resolved, I think, takes a lot of thought. And I think the town manager, right, is that this, you know, deserves kind of a complete rewrite. So, and I think where you have to go with it to bring it into constitutional compliance is to not make the regulation based on the category or the content of the speech. And, you know, that's going to take a lot, lot of doing. So I guess that's my one, the first point. So I don't think we could take your language, despite, you know, the thought that went into it, sort of, I think we'd have to really change it a lot, you know, to make it legally sufficient. The other point that I'd like to raise, which I thought was interesting, town manager was saying, well, the football team wants to put up signs along the track.
Or the track team.
Well, and I guess that's what I'm kind of getting, I mean, it kind of raised, I mean, it made me start thinking.
Whose track is it, then, right?
Right, right. I mean, or whose space is it? You know, like, well, if soccer and lacrosse, I'll take the track out of it because of my parochial interest in that. But, you know, the, but if it's soccer and lacrosse are using the same space, you know, who's got dibs on that space to put up signs? I guess baseball, you know, it's.
Less of an issue.
Yeah. I mean, you know, baseball plays on baseball fields. It's a little hard to play anything else. But, I mean, I think that's another thing that we would have to sort of sort through, you know, to make this into kind of a comprehensive scheme. You know, I would have no problem, you know, every sport doing some advertising, you know, to bring in some more revenue to the town.
Sure, go ahead. Because I do think that, having been through something similar in past life, there is a, there is a pretty significant unintended consequence factor, I think, in what we're trying to do, which, like I said, I think it's a good idea, and you're right. I think there are, we have to, we talk all the time about the tax rate and pressures on revenues, and if there was a way that the town could get some revenue out of this, is kind of a shared win-win, as you noted, or a cost avoid, or an expenditure avoidance, even if it's not direct revenue, that's something we, of course, will be looking for. Because when it says, whose space is it? It's the town's space. And I think that's why we want to make sure that there is a win-win. That said, I think if I understand Alex, if someone wanted to buy a sign that said something really incendiary, like want to make a political statement, you couldn't really stop them from doing that if we allowed signage. Is that basically what you're saying?
No, no, actually, you would have, see, when the, when the government speak, I mean, this has come up with the MBTA sometimes, you know, the T, you know, somebody wants to put on some big political statement. You have a lot more control over it. I mean, the issue that I'm having about the content is that, you know, we place pretty significant restrictions. For example, you can't put a permanent sign about politics on your, on your yard. But under this bylaw, you could do permanent advertise, or I guess semi-permanent advertising.
On a particular place in town.
Right, right.
It is, in that sense, it is more restrictive than the political speech provision, because I couldn't put Joe Schmo landscaping supports Long Meadow baseball on my front lawn, under our proposal.
Right. And what I'm getting at is, anything, you know, and Tom heard this, you know, the guy who was presenting, anything that requires you to read the sign to figure out what rules apply to it means you're regulating based on content. So, I mean, again, it gets a little complicated. But I don't think you'd have a problem in being able to restrict the type of advertising, you know. So if it was, I don't know what you said, risque or whatever, I think you would be within your rights to prevent that.
I just had a couple of things.
Go ahead.
So, and I guess I think that, you know, when I look at the difference between, you know, school property that people invested, you know, millions and millions of dollars, and then for some, for me to say, well, I want to have my name right on the 50-yard line, I'd say that would be a bit presumptuous of me to think that I could just do that for a couple hundred bucks. You know, I mean, I just think that that takes on.
We'd want to really extract some money.
We'd want to get at least 150,000 to get my name, and probably a small print.
I mean, we all have our price, you know.
150, and get the end zone painted free of probably.
So, I mean, that is one thing. But when I think of signage in sports, I mean, baseball is the only sport that really comes to mind for me, although I know they do in hockey and so forth. But, you know, so I don't have a problem seeing signs at a baseball. You certainly spend a lot of time, I had a son who played some baseball, and I enjoyed being there a long time, but it would be nice to see some signage. One of my concerns is, besides Sitco, you know, you know, hopefully, they won't want to move in on it. But the decision on, you know, who, whose signs get to be up, you know, how, how long a period of time they get to be up, you know, is it one year, two years, five years, a permanent contract? And then, you know, how many signs in general are going to be put up? I think those are all questions that, you know, aren't answered at this point, unless I miss something.
In terms of how many signs would be put up, we do have under subsection four, that the signage would have to be spaced at least two feet apart with a maximum number of 25 signs. Per field. And the way we did that was kind of figuring that you're, using my 60-foot diamond, which is where my son currently plays, that the, from the right field post to the left field post is about 180 feet. And so we figured 25 signs spaced two feet apart would look nice, and, you know, still provide some significant revenue. So there is a limitation that's proposed in there. I can tell you that the subsection eight, that was recommended by the planning board to delete, had originally said, however, no signs are allowed on Russell Field, Blueberry Hill, Greenwood, kind of naming, you know, from our perspective, thinking that was a good thing. And the planning board had thought it would.
it would we were better served to just be silent on that point and let the restrictions stand for themselves. In terms of who would be deciding, I would love it if people were coming to us saying, hey, we want to advertise. The reality is, it's the reverse.
Right.
We're going to businesses and saying, hi, can you please spend, you know, X dollars a year? We'll gen we create the sign, we hold the sign, we put it out. You know, these are people, places like the kids place and, you know, local some local contractors, some local landscaping companies. I was going to try and hit up Kidley Winks, you know, some of the the local businesses. So it's not a question of, I mean, again, I wish they were coming and saying, please advertise. I mean, I asked the Valley Blue Sox if we can get signage. We just we'd love to. We'd love to sponsor baseball, you know, I've approached the Springfield Falcons. So we're regulated, we're a sponsored organization. And I did have in there that the only signage can be posted by a Long Meadow sponsored organization. And we're sponsored through the Park and Rec, we're approved through the Park and Rec as is Little League. So there would be a measure of control there in terms of if they thought we were doing something inappropriate, they have the ability to come in as the Park and Rec Board and say, hey, you know, we don't want you doing this, or there's a sign torn and you're not maintaining it. There would be some accountability. But the idea would be is we'd solicit the signs, it would we'd create the signs. And again, I did put in here, and I know content is a problem, but pornography is a problem for me.
Right.
Bookends, I don't care how much bookends offered me to put a sign up, they're not putting a sign up on my kid's field. You know, so we do have, you know, I think there's a natural control in there with that, with just the way the process works and the fact that we are approved by the by the Park and Rec Board. So it could just be any group that could do it.
So if there was some oversight from Park and Rec, I think that would be.
Tom, I'll just tell you, historically, I remember that you said how long and who got, you know, the at the time, it was when I referred to the 1990 era, that that they were plywood signs. And so the cost of the sign, we required the first contract to be a two-year contract because you didn't make a whole lot of money the first year after you paid for the sign. It wasn't until the second year you started making money. And by the fifth year, you hauled out the sign. It was it was pure profit. So there's all those kind of practical considerations.
They're nylon now, but it's the same principle. We don't make a lot of money the first year.
So, you know, Stephen, I apologize.
Sorry.
If I could, I one of the things that concerns me, I, you know, my personal opinion is I'd love to see this be part of an all encompassing review by our, whether it's our town council or special counsel. My concern is that that it'll move, not for any purpose by intent, but it'll end up moving at the speed of town government, which means you won't have this by the spring, which you lose a year. And I have a personal, and this is not a select board statement, it's my personal statement, is that if I were you, I'd get 10 signatures and get this out there. Meanwhile, let's start with with and see what if we can't supersede it through the town's actions and say, you know, we're, you know, so when it comes to town meeting, you'll withdraw yours because we'll have a better one on the on there. I mean, I hate to say that, Stephen.
Well, I hear you. I hear what you're saying. I think what you just did though is open the door for the track and field boosters or the soccer boosters to go get 10 signatures on their own.
But they're going to have to need a bylaw that passes at town meeting.
Right. I think I don't think this is.
I mean, bylaws don't just fly through town meeting.
No, but they do fly. They can fly through the they can fly through this board to be on the warrant, especially since we're all kind of aware what needs to be done.
Right.
The 10 signatures while the board vote, six to one, half dozen the other. At the end of the day, Tommy is going to make the final decision. Shouldn't we have Tommy make the final decision on and go to them one time with a comprehensive bylaw? And I don't think, like I said, I I have every confidence we'll have this for this for the warrant. I mean, this is this is not that big a deal.
Well, I mean, I agree it can be done, but I think there is a there's some heavy lifting. I mean, this isn't about taking a red line on what we've got. It's about starting with a blank sheet of paper.
I'm sure there are other communities, though, that are probably rectified their bylaw issues. And, you know, our town council represents other communities that may have addressed this. If not, we can always go to our land use planning council, who represents hundreds of communities, and get something from them to get us started. Let's do this. Let's see how it goes.
I think it's pretty important, though, that what they have done here is that line that says not visible to adjacent landowners. Do not over expand this. Keep it to exactly what they're requesting, or else I think you're opening up a can of worms that they don't want to they don't want to make that fight. And if someone else wants to, that's fine, but you might end up with a failure in town meeting. My.
We tried really hard not to open it up.
Right.
Exactly. Because there's a huge segment of the population, rightly or wrongly, that's concerned about blights on the town with signage, particularly advertising signage. So we did, you know, you know, not to pat myself on the back, but I worked really hard on this to try and make it so that the only fields that could comply would be those kind of secluded fields.
And not to beat a dead horse, but there's at least a 10 or 15 year period where there was was right or wrong, legal or not, there was signage on at least Stroopel.
It's much closer to 45 years because I played at Stroopel in 1972.
I don't go back that far.
Now, I have a question. Did you talk to Parks and Rec? Did you show this to them?
Yes, we did. We've shown we've shown this to we gave this to Barry Jarvis as well. I believe she showed it to the board. And my understanding was, though, that they were going to defer to town council.
Oh, okay. So but they did know what's going on.
Yes, we've spoken to Barry. She's also seen a copy of this. At the same time, we sent it to the planning board at the beginning of the year.
So I just request that you sort of keep them involved if you're going to be touching or changing their parts.
Can we put not that how can we try to fast track this so that we don't disappoint the group that's in good faith turning dust rather than doing it the.
Put it on the agenda.
I guess the town council has the baseline draft. He has reviewed it. It's the more it's the broader look at the bylaw that if we get a sense that it's not it's not doable, then we can proceed. I just think from a legislative standpoint, it doesn't make sense to do a half measure. And I'll be honest, I disagree. I think the change of bylaw to benefit only one group, if you're going to like in the legislative world, if you open a piece of legislation, you do it comprehensively. You don't kind of go in and do kind of a laser thing. And I look at it as if we're going to make a change to a town policy, it should be for the benefit of more than just one group.
I do. It's not an issue of benefit from group. This, if you start saying you're going to have signs visible from the road, you are going to have a large group population that's going to be fighting against that, which then.
We're going to get swallowed up.
They will not. They don't want to defend on town floor what they're not bringing to town floor. So.
Well, this is, I mean, you kind of raise an interesting point. I mean, so in other words, like the lacrosse and soccer teams wouldn't be able to benefit, nor would the football team or the track, because everything would be visible from the road.
Exactly. Yeah, because that's a limitation on our advertising. I don't, if I were them, I would not want to take that fight, because I think that that then changes the character of the town. And you would have to really argue that. Very difficult on the floor.
If you were to rewrite the bylaw from scratch, I guarantee you, you're going to keep the language that not in public view. That's not going to be that's going to be in the next bylaw.
Yeah, I agree.
And that and that excludes those fields that are in everybody's view every day, namely the football field and the track.
And also, those fields are also in pretty good shape. I mean, we have no bleachers, no scoreboard, no bathrooms, no paved road, no secluded place where they can do pitching practice. My kids are swinging bats on deck, seven and eight-year-old boys, right next to the dugout. You know, there I have to move toddlers that are playing in our pitching warm-up area because it's a little strip of grass right where everyone's plunked their chairs to watch because there's nowhere to sit and there's nowhere to warm up. So I suppose, I mean, you know, I guess I'm not feeling too sorry for lacrosse and football right now, you know. And this is really needed for us.
And I think this fits with the character of the town. I mean, I we'd like to be a green community, but you can't hang your clothes up on a clothesline because people could see it. So, I mean, why would you be able to have the signs out in the middle of, you know, Wolf Swamp Field?
So if I if I can kind of bring this back around, what I'm hearing is, I think, a consensus to, Stephen, let's go forward and see what we can do from the town. And hopefully, we will, you know, we have every reason to believe that we will be accepting this. I, you know, if somebody wants to make a motion that the that the select board adopt a revision of the sign sign, you know, bylaw to to incorporate many of the aspects that we've been talking about tonight, I'll certainly accept that motion.
I mean, that that I mean, that doesn't really say anything.
Yeah, I'm referring it to the subcommittee.
Which one? Policy?
By law, policy subcommittee or whatever, it's kind of mixed. I mean, town council will be able to let me start there.
Yeah.
And we can report back at the next meeting. I'll be here, but just not report.
Do you need us to give you a deadline? Or will you act with a deadline so that we can make sure do everything we can to make sure this goes through?
I'll put my best people on it.
No, I'm just I'm just saying, you know.
Yeah, no, I he's, like I said, my count already has it. It's just looking at the other components of this.
Why don't we tell them we want it on the on the spring town meeting in that way?
And if there's if there's things we can do to help, I mean, you know, I I know Mike Callan, I've worked with him, I've worked against him. But, you know, my goal, our goal as an organization is to get the best baseball program for our kids that we can have. And so whatever I can do to help, you know, we're more than happy to do that. We just we want to do it right. We're, like I said, we're rule followers. So we want to do it the right way.
Just one thing to that. The number one thing in my mind is keeping our kids in town. They're starting to literally go everywhere. And kids want not only a quality program, but they want amenities. We don't even have a dugout at Turner, scoreboard, two key components to a baseball field. So that's just my two cents.
The scoreboard at Stroopel, at least I know, is a private donation.
Right. But even if we tried to donate it, the town comes back to us and says, we're not going to take it because you need to show us how you're going to fund it to maintain it. So I can't even give you a scoreboard right now because I don't have the ability for LBA to show them how we're going to maintain it and help the town maintain it.
We ask forgiveness instead of permission, I guess.
The other thing to consider is, I believe with the new legislation, CPA money is opened up to repairing renovating parks. And when you see those roads, those dips that you're I've been on those terrible gullies, you could also look to next year requesting CPA.
This is actually how it all started.
We we Mr. Crane actually sent me an email along with some other folks, Barry Jarvis, insinuating that we should probably hold off a year. We were going to proceed this year with that. But we figured we'd get some skin in the game, get a fundraising, have a maintenance kitty, so to say, so we can maintain what we're trying to do here going forward.
And that would help strengthen the application in order to get the funds to make those.
That's a very good idea.
So this is there is a grand plan. It's the help us, help you, help us.
It sounds good.
Some photos of that would be helpful, too. Kids on. It's before, well, somebody would see how bad.
I've got 25-year-old photos if you want.
And they're still the same.
Mark.
So I was just going to add two things. I mean, one thing, to me, it makes sense to bring into this conversation, not just, you know, the baseball. And again, I'm totally supportive of what you're trying to do. But I also am supportive of other sports associations being able to do similar things. And it seems like we ought to be thinking about that. You know, if at the end of the day, we decide we want to do something that's targeted on baseball, you know, that that's some, you know, that's something that we should, I think, vote on. The other thing I would mention, and I'll just make this offer, Stephen, I'm happy to work with you on the drafting or or, you know, whatever you'd like. I'm happy to help.
If I could just respond to that, I'd submit that it's clearly not as much of an issue for the other sports, or they'd be here before you as well.
So.
Just for whatever it's worth. You know, there's no one from any other sport saying they need this revenue in order to do field improvements.
I appreciate that, okay, but I've already got the feedback. So and I just.
What? That other sports?
Of course, other sports are going to ask. I've already and it's not and again, I and we're agreeing. So that says something. I agree that I'm completely supportive of doing this. But I think, like I said, my view is a little broader. And what I'm trying to is think of a way, and we're not going to sell it tonight, we should probably, you know, be respectful of your time and our own time to move on. But I'm trying to think of a way, how can we frame the question to town meeting that ultimately has the final say, to give them some alternatives? Because it may be that town meeting may decide that in kind of a, you know, that they maybe now is the time to be a little more liberal with the attitudes towards signage and advertising and things like that. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. But can we frame this in such a way where we can have the broader question and still not foreclose the opportunity for the more narrowly tailored proposal that you're making? I do think that legislatively, there may be an opportunity to do that. This is something that we have to the board has to consider as we develop the warrant. But like I said, nobody here wants to deny you the opportunity to do what you're proposing. I just I think I owe it, my view is we owe it to the community to say, is there a bigger public policy gain if we're going to go through this process a single time? Let's see if we can do it right. So that's the only consideration.
No, I appreciate that. And then appreciate that our perspective is more narrow.
Thank you so much for coming in and bringing this to everybody's attention.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is we need to approve and sign the presidential primary warrant. And I suspect we need a motion to approve the setting Tuesday, March, Tuesday, March 1st. That's the presidential primary day. Wow. Coming along, right?
So moved. Is there anything we have to?
I mean, I guess the only I'll second for discussion.
We don't set it. We just approve the warrant for the town.
I mean, I'll I'll second it for discussion. I mean, my only question, and it'd be nice if somebody, maybe Debbie or maybe Stephen knows, is this the actual right day? I mean, like, I always like to vote for things that I know are correct.
Oh, that March 1st is the correct one?
Right, yeah.
I always heard it was March 1st, which surprised me. Yeah.
It is. And this is right from the Secretary's of the Commonwealth's office. So we just.
I was surprised it's taking us so long to do this. I thought we had to do this months ago now.
Tuesday, the first day of March.
Okay. The other discussion, we're going to vote on all those in favor. Any opposed? All right. Debbie, have you got something for us to sign? Somebody does. Yeah, it's somewhere there. Thank you. Come on down, Paul.
Bill Gavin coming down and saying.
Talking about a budget update.
Of course, if we didn't sign this, maybe Donald Trump would come and tell us what loses.
I don't know.
Well, you know, you were talking about raising revenue, about putting the sign on the field. I mean, he is a high roller.
Exactly.
And could, you know, maybe maybe that would be just the sort of thing you'd want to fund.
Paul, you're on.
Okay, budget calendar requires or suggests a financial update to this board at this point in time. Basically, I'll give you a little update with FY '16, our current fiscal year, and some of the impact that '16 will then have on '17. And then Stephen and I will kind of give you an overview of where we are with the FY '17 budget. During last week, two very important numbers came into the town. One is the governor's number for the estimated amount of state aid. That number, I don't know if you saw an email sent out or anything, but that number is about $111,000 more than we are currently getting. We were originally in our FY 2017 budget projections expecting level funding. In the meantime, Stephen and I have updated that number to include that $111,000 in the FY '17 budget projection. The other number that came in last week, it's also very important for both '16 and '17, is our FY '16 motor vehicle excise tax commitment, first commitment. It's the largest commitment, usually comprises about 70% of our total motor vehicle excise tax revenue for the year. That number came in at 1.94 million. That number probably has no significance to you unless we get to the next statement. That was about $150,000 higher than the first commitment from last year. It's a substantial increase. That tells me that, I think, for FY '16, I also gave you some of the local receipt projections that minimally our local receipt projections for motor vehicle excise taxes, everything else being equal for the remainder of the fiscal year, we're going to exceed projections by at least that $150,000. That is good news for FY '16 and also allows us to increase the projection for motor vehicle excise tax moving forward into FY '17. With regard to FY, the regular or the other items with FY '16, the budgets are running pretty tight, both on the expense side and on the revenue side. While most revenues, again, with the exception of the motor vehicle excise tax, are running fairly tight, I do expect most of the categories, especially the larger categories, to meet or exceed the budgetary projections, but not by large amounts. I don't.
I got the numbers, Paul.
No, I have the numbers actually. Again, I had provided a local or a receipt report through. through the 26th of January. And on the very bottom of that, you can actually see where I've made some, some projections as to where we're going to be on the receipt side. In total, the general fund, I'm assuming, is gonna be at least $205,000 over. Probably, it's gonna be a higher number, uh, once all is said and done. And I will update that number as the months' revenues come in. There's a number of other areas that are doing very well, the penalties and interest on, on doing coin taxes, the rental revenues that we get for the cell towers, as, as another example, is doing very well. And licenses and permits, at this point in time, have been doing very well. There are a couple of accounts that are not meeting budget, but again, we're talking about a $5,000 deficit or a $10,000 deficit, not a large amount. Again, I'm stating that at least $200,000 we will have in excess revenues above our budget. On the expenditure side, again, I'm seeing the same thing, that the budgets are running very tight. I do not expect any one account to turn back a large amount of money. The police and fire overtimes are, are, they're running a little bit above budget. But I know, I know both chiefs are, are working on their overtime budgets to bring them back in line. I think the fire department budget is, um, because of staffing coming back on from injuries and, uh, you know, from injuries mainly, um, he has his coming back online a little bit each more every month. And I do also believe the police chief, um, had some issues with a maternity leave and another injury on duty. Um, and he's bringing his back slowly in line also. But if there's anything that is going to probably go over within the FY '16 budget are those two line items. There's also the opportunity in those two line items, you recall last year, that each one of those accounts, $20,000 was taken out of those accounts and put into the reserve fund. We have not had to hit the reserve fund as of yet. And we'll knock on wood that we don't have to by the end of the year. But again, it is understood that, you know, they, um, there was a $20,000 movement out of each one of those accounts. So, with that being said, historically, we normally get $500,000 plus in turnbacks from, from departments on a historical basis. I don't anticipate that number being that high because, again, I don't, I do not see any one area turning back a large amount of money. I do expect that we would get $250,000 to $300,000 in turnbacks in small amounts from, from, from all the departments. You know, we're, I don't want to say we're picking up the nickels and dimes, but we're picking up the $10,000 here, the $5,000 there, you know, maybe a $25,000 a dollar amount. But, um, when you, when you put that together, looking forward into next four years, free cash, when you take that excess revenue on the revenue side and you look at the turnbacks, you know, you're only talking about $500,000 or $600,000 in a projected free cash number. That is, is not, uh, it's not one of our better years, let's say. It is enough. We will present a balanced budget, so we will not need any free cash to balance the budget per se. So, but it is a low, if you look at the historical trends of, of what we started off, beginning years of free cash with. With regard to our...
I'm sorry, can I, you know, you, uh, can you just kinda say what you said again about the free cash? Because I didn't quite get it, and I wanna be clear on it.
Sure. I'm estimating that next year's free cash will be roughly in the $600,000 range.
Okay, I get that part.
And, and that amount is, is basically on a historical low when we compare to the previous, a number of previous fiscal years, where we've been 1.2, 1.9 million, so on and so forth.
So, how does this, I'm looking at your memo and, and as you're talking. So, when you reference the $500,000 in our FY '16 free cash account, how does that play into the $600,000 that you expect to be certified?
The only way that it's going to play into it is, is if we do not utilize a portion of that. If we leave, let's say, $200,000 in FY '15 that is unexpended at the end of the year, then you could assume that FY '17, according to what I'm saying, would now be $800,000 instead of the $600. It would be added to the amount that I stated out.
All right. So, this $500,000, so the, the $600,000 not include the $500,000?
Correct.
And the $500,000 you're anticipating would be appropriated?
What I, what I am anticipating, there are a number of potential articles that are, that are coming down the line that, um, will it be fully utilized? I don't know, but it would be my recommendation, potentially, if there is any excess FY '16 money that potentially may go into the operational stabilization fund. We do have a proposal by, by Mr. Gold that potentially may be used to fund the, uh, the school building deficit that we have, which is $278,000. The only number that I'm fairly solid on is about a $90,000 commitment that we need to get done for an FY '18 revaluation. And we do it this early because we'll appropriate the money at the end of FY '16. The work will actually get done in FY '17 in time for FY '18. That is the only real money that I see that has to be appropriated at this point in time from that current $500,000. The rest are kind of guesses, you know? We've been lucky, I mean, historically, we've always had snow and ice deficits. We've been lucky thus far this winter.
Maybe we'll do better.
I think, I wanna build on, if I may. Build on Paul's point, though. I mean, I, what he's saying is we have not specifically, um, allocated even in a proposal form, the free cash. But the schools just presented their budget. They are 200 and somewhat thousand dollars over their budget proposal, the 800,000 and change that we had allocated back when we were projecting a $500,000 deficit back in the fall. So, that makes that number even more negative. To the 200,000 dollar, 200...
77.
277,000 dollars. It's in the presentation, I can't find it. 277,000 dollars to the negative. Um, we are...
Can you circulate that?
I just got it. Honestly, I just got a paper copy. I don't have my own copy.
I mean, because it's, it's hard to follow something.
I would assume that that's gonna be on their website.
They just presented it tonight, so I got handed a paper copy randomly, not even by the schools.
Do you mind passing it around?
Yeah. So, we, on the general government side of the budget, are also projecting a deficit of about $250,000. So, we have $500,000 for free cash out there. We have not yet completed our snow and ice season, and we have, right now, a deficit of 500,000 and change, um, that we're looking at for the, for the budget as we kinda go through. Now, is that tremendous amount of money, insurmountable obstacle? I don't, I think, as Paul lives to in his, in his memo, no. But we have some work to do. Uh, I think, as, I've been clear since I've been here, and I know Paul feels the same way, we do not wanna use free cash for operational recurring expenses. And so, now what we have to do is get in and look at the select board policies, um, that are gonna, that are increasing in terms of expenditures going forward. We talked about this last week. What of those things are one-time costs that we could reasonably defend allocating some of that free cash to? What other costs can we reduce? Are there gonna be other revenue projections that go up? These are the kind of things that we are in the process of doing now. So, to answer, so you answered the question, do we have that $500,000, you know, already allocated? No. But it's not, but it doesn't mean we're not going to when we present the town manager's budget to the select board.
Stephen, can I just, when you say $500,000, so that's Paul's memo that said it looked like 247 plus what's in that document that the schools just presented.
247 plus 277, right.
Yeah, we're talking about the FY '17 budget at this point in time.
Right, right, right. So, but I just wanted to make sure that...
And the 247 is the town side?
It was the full budget at this point in time, which includes X amount of dollars for the school department of 800,000. So, yeah, you can't just say it's all town side. It's a total budget, but the school department...
But I thought you said 250 on each side.
Well, we, on our side, when I say our side, our, our budget documents is really what I meant. The budget documents we produce, that we look at for ourselves, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent have their own set of budget documents they look at. On our set of budget documents, there's a plug-in number of 808 for the schools.
808 is the increase that we gave them year over year?
Year over year.
And they now are saying they don't need 808, they need 808 plus 277.
They need 1.08 something.
808 plus 277.
Right. So, on their budget documents, they are plus 277. On our budget documents, it's, that has the 808 number, it's plus 247. You know, I think, and there are, there are town departments that have increased, asked for increased budgets. There are town departments that have brought in budget, that operate budgets from the general fund that are less than the previous year. And right now, we're just kinda going through and, quite honestly, nickel and dimeing some line items to try and get it. I mean, it will be balanced when, when you get it, but we're gonna, we wanna have the full slate of tools at our disposal to balance it.
I, I think that, you know, the second page of my memo kinda has a lot of this highlighted, that it says, you know, "The current draft of the 2017 budget shows a 2047, uh, shows a shortfall of 200, $247,000."
That, that's assuming that, just the 808.
Right. And again, I, I further explain also what's in that 247 and what's out of that 247. Now, within the 247, the select board set up three initiatives. One was not to go up to the full 2.5% tax levy that we're allowed to go up annually. That it was, we were only gonna go up 2.25%. Well, that extra quarter of a percent in dollar value is $110,000. The select board had initiative to increase OPEB funding, as an example, from going from where it was in FY '16 at 0.5% up a quarter of a percent to 0.75%. That's an additional cost of $122,000. And your last initiative was to increase your capital funding from 2.5% to 2.75% in FY '17, and that's an additional $147,000. So, those initiatives do have some cost, but are built into the negative $247,000 recurring.
And the sum of those three numbers is $379,000. I mean, I, Paul, one thing, just as a count, I ended up making a table at the bottom because you had it all, and it made it much clearer. Maybe if you do that in the future, so we can just...
Okay. Again, you know, the other thing that it does not include, like I said, is the additional kindergarten money, which is $277,000. You know, the, the biggest probably unknown that we have at this point in time is also the Scantic Valley Health Group voting on FY '17 health insurance rates at, at the end of this month.
What's the date on that?
The 24th.
24th, okay.
Um, you know, right now, I have a 5% increase projected in the budget. I'm anticipating that that's going to be enough, but...
He's the treasure of Scantic Valley. He probably knows.
But, you know, well, the board votes. I, I don't vote. I don't vote. But should that number be higher, I mean, it's gonna have a swing of 28, every percent higher is $28,000. So, again, I am anticipating that the 5% is gonna be enough, but that could have a significant effect if it gets into some high numbers there.
Paul, one thing that you had in there that I, I wasn't able to dig out, you said that the budget, your, your preliminary budget includes all wage increases for schools and towns. And then you broke it down by schools and towns, but I think you did, but I couldn't figure that out. And, and I thought I saw the number of 808 for schools.
808 is, um, it's in the, it's in that second page in the, in the bottom of the first paragraph?
Right. So, that is the school...
That is the school amount.
But that's what's already in there.
That is what is already in their projected budget.
Okay, but what, how much was of town wage increases was in the, do you have...
Um, I, I don't have the exact amount of what's in there currently. But what I do have in our budget projection is an amount to take care of potential collective bargaining agreements. And, you know, that, that amount is a certain percentage set aside that we can discuss what Stephen produces. But there is, there is X amount at that point in time set aside because, again, in FY '17, all our collective bargaining agreements are, are gonna have expired.
So, would, you would kinda be anticipating this, because your note said it also doesn't increase, include $277,000 of school salary increases above the current budget. And that seem, is that a coincidence that that number that you stated is the same as what you're now saying?
No, I think you're reading it right. It's not, it's 277 is the kindergarten, full-day kindergarten number. Note, the biggest ticket item in 2017 budget projection with the 247,000 shortfall does not include the funding required for a full free-day kindergarten program and additional 277K above the school's increase for wage adjustments.
So, they're basically saying the full-day kindergarten, they're pushing...
They, they seem to, they're, they're going to, seems to be asking for it out of a general fund, funding mechanism.
Well, I, and I just wanna clarify that I think the full-day kindergarten is 377,000. It seems like they have some partial offsets that they're presenting, but not, but only partial.
So, the 2, so when you talk about 2, I mean, I mean, it's a little inaccurate, in my view, to, to talk about the 277 as being the full-day kindergarten. I mean, is the 277 is the sum total of everything they're asking for that's above the 808 increase?
That would be correct.
But, but I think in their proposal, if you look at their presentation, I know you just got it. But if you look at the presentation, they go through tiers of offsets. But, and I think it's, but it's pretty clear, I don't know, from the, I mean, from that narrative, I think it's fairly clear, but certainly from our discussions with the schools, it's clear that the drive for free full-day kindergarten is the, um, major difference in terms, uh, salaries and, and the cost of living, because they just went through their collective bargaining agreement process, is probably in terms of dollar value, the big, single biggest factor. But in terms of policy change that would drive the budget, it is the full-day kindergarten. And like I said, they, they've spent some time trying to look at offsets and, you know, um, how to manage that. But either way, it still is, it still is creating a, um, I don't, it's not a shortfall or a deficit. It really is just a, a gap, if you will.
A budgetary gap at this point in time.
A budgetary gap that is not, it's not like all of a sudden we have obligations that are beyond our revenues that are accounted. It's just, right now, it's on paper.
Paul, thank you. I just wanted to, my, my only comments are, I, I, you started out by saying, you're talking about free cash projections for the current fiscal year when it ends in the end of June of being 500 to 600,000 dollars. And, you know, I, I understand that's historic lows, but I, I was one of the people who kinda pushed to reduce free cash. I think it represents good budgeting and, more importantly, it's, we only overtaxed by 500 to 600,000 dollars. Now, granted, much of that, we wouldn't have known not to overtax by because we didn't know we were gonna get an increase in state aid, and we didn't know we were gonna get an increase in, in local revenue of 150,000, you know? So, there, there's things that we couldn't have known about at the time we, we set the budget. So, I'm not, you know, you can't do a zero here. But, but when we have free cash of 1.5 or 2 million dollars, short of something extraordinary, I would say that we, we may have, in fact, missed the mark by taxing, taxing folks more than we needed to. So, I, I have no problem with the fact that the free cash is lower. It does make things a little bit more difficult next time around. But we've had a longtime policy of not using free cash to, you know, one-time money to balance an ongoing budget. And so, it, it may be nice to...
Except when we do.
We've...
2013.
That was one of the very few times we've done it. Right. So, anyway.
Yes, there was a trend there. We were using free cash, 300, $400,000. For a couple of years, I think, we used it.
You're saying the 500, if it doesn't snow again?
Well, again, I, I'm not anticipating, well, let's just say, one hit could be the snow and ice account. Should something happen. I mean, you know, again, they could be out salty and sanding and things of that nature, and, and that adds up quickly, too, even without a major snowstorm.
But you're not, you're not assuming a surplus, you're not, you're not assuming getting money?
I would not assume a surplus in that account, though.
No, no, you weren't. Okay.
We only budget $100,000, and we probably, and we got a report already that says we've used some portion.
15, yeah, 15.
Yeah, and we hadn't had much of it at all.
Right, right, yeah.
Paul, thank you very much. You'll be back, I assume, from about a monthly...
We'll be back. Um, I think we present the budget at the end of this month to the board, so...
He'll be back in two weeks.
You know, one of the issues, just on terms of the timeline, since the school, I mean, this was an issue last, you remember this? They felt pressure to present a budget to us because, and they sort of blame us, in a sense, you know? And, and it really felt like a miscommunication, where like, they felt like they were pressured to present a budget to us, like, middle of February, when really, there was like another week, week and a half, where we didn't even touch it. I mean, like, there was really no reason to...
Well, we're not touching it, but they are. Well, we're not touching it, but they are.
And then also...
That was the argument, the response that we had to it.
Yeah, that's not exactly how that all played out, but the front end is, they had a snowed-out meeting, you know, this was all this controversy, they had a snowed-out meeting, they still met. We met in the police community room so they could have this room. LCTV didn't come through the snow, as I recall, you snow, you across country skied to our meeting. And so, what ended up happening is, when I, and I was on the phone during our meeting with the chair, trying to work on the scheduling, and the big problem was they couldn't get a quorum during school vacation week. And so, we had said a matter of a week, you can have some time, but it was like two to three weeks before they could get back together again, and that really made it very difficult for us to do our work on the budget. And that's, so, I mean, the calendar's been the calendar for years, that was more of a scheduling of individual school committee members' availability to meet and get to do it.
Right, I know, but like, but one of the concerns, though, is people didn't really get a chance to weigh in on it before it was voted on.
Yeah, they put, there was actually a, the meeting that they had, the public forum, there was a snow crisis again.
That's the problem, right.
So, they had a couple of snow crises that caused the whole schedule to implode.
So, I mean, I guess, you know, to me, I wouldn't want to have that artificial pressure on them getting their budget together, you know, if, if we're not really going to look at it.
Well, they're going to do their public forum, and we're going to work on it.
You don't, we do, and we need that time. It's not artificial pressure.
Because our time is pushed back by the charter, that we need to have a budget to you folks by the end of February or early March, so...
Right.
It basically allows us a little window to evaluate what they've presented in order that we present to you on our timeline. Kind of works backwards from town meeting dates.
Thank you, Paul. Does anybody have any other items on this topic? There's a, next, last agenda item is just subcommittee reports, I don't know if anybody else has anything to report. I just wanted to give everybody, mostly for the people at home, just a quick summary of something that's going on at the Pine and Valley Transit Authority that may affect seniors in Long, town of Long Meadow, that one of the services they represent or they offer is something called paratransit. Most people think of that as the van dial-a-ride kind of service, and they offer that at the same rate as buses. And there's two categories of people who can, and actually two categories of van service, and one is the, what it's called ADA, Americans with Disabilities, so people who have, who cannot use the normal bus routes because they cannot get to buses. And the second is what is called seniors, which is anybody over the age of 60 can call up and order a dial-a-ride. And I don't pretend to know all the details, but I know it's, you schedule a week in advance, and for seniors, dial-a-ride, you can literally say, I want to go to the Holyoke Mall. You know, I want to, pick me up at my house and take me to Long Meadow shops, and then come back two hours later and take me home. The problem is some, that the disability services are mandated by law, and the cost of, of the van service is going up substantially, and at this point, I'll report, because it's all there is to report, is that the PVTA is taking a look at potential ways to revise services they offer in the dial-a-ride, which is the senior services for people over the age of 60, for people in Long Meadow who may use that. Stephen and I, I don't know, you know, for our adult center, I think they may want to alert people just to be aware of what's going on. They will not make changes precipitously. The PVTA is a public agency, they'll have all kinds of hearings and discussions and debates over it, but for people who do use it, and it is one of the primary uses of buses in Long Meadow, Long Meadow otherwise really has only one fixed bus route, when there's one that goes down, well, one goes down Commerce Street and the other Long Meadow Street, but it's really the same, same B5 route. But for people who are interested and may use it, I'd suggest that you just be aware of it and take, take an interest in what may be happening to the cost of the dial, of the dial-a-ride service. In fact, they may be toning it down.
Do they have statistics on how many service for Long Meadow?
They've got all kinds, that's the one thing this thing has, they've got a statistic for every, they count every ride, or they know where they got on.
Do you know how many?
I don't have those numbers with me, Marie, but they, they have the numbers. But like I said, I think for, for Long Meadow, you know, dial-a-ride is pretty substantial. One of the things that we talked about at that meeting was perhaps extending the support if the, if the PVTA can't run dial rides, extend the support or increase support to the Senior Adult Services Council on Agings who do run van services so that they can run the in-town van services more effectively and efficiently with subsidies by PVTA. I'm not sure that that's down at a, you know, any kind of action level at some point, but it's, that's the extent of potential discussions to compensate for some of this. Stay tuned, it's still very, very much under discussion.
I just sent a note to the adult center director to put something about it in the newsletter.
Yeah, okay, great. If anybody else has any other comments? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Thank you very much, folks, see you in two weeks, same time, same channel. Good night.
Good night.